Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. We have a little bit of business to do before we officially open this next portion of our meeting, so bear with me. We are now reconvening into open session. We were meeting in closed session prior. And so, Mr. City Attorney, are there any announcements in open session?
Yes, Mayor. Previously, the City Council went into closed session to discuss the item identified on the 5 o'clock agenda. There was no reportable action taken. At this time, it would be appropriate to adjourn that meeting.
Okay, so I'm about to adjourn a meeting, but it doesn't mean I'm adjourning this meeting, okay? So I'm adjourning our closed session meeting. All right. See, isn't it fun? Okay, so good evening, everybody. Welcome, welcome. I now call this meeting to order. So, I believe our student, Walker. Walker, are you here somewhere in the audience? Walker. Where are you? Oh, you're Walker. Walker. All right. Okay. Excellent. Walker, can you come down? Walker Overholt from Granville Elementary. Actually, come up here, Walker. I'm going to give you a microphone. Is going to lead us in the pledge. It's so exciting. But I'm going to hand the microphone to Walker, and you're going to lead all of us in the pledge of the flag, but you'll face the flag, okay? So here's the mic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got to stay up here. Stay here. I would like your principal, correct? All right, please introduce yourself and tell us about Walker.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am so proud to honor a truly exceptional student, Ms. Walker Overholt. When the 5th grade teachers at Granville were asked to select a student for this recognition, the decision was unanimous and immediate. Walker stands out in every academic area. In fact, when teachers return test scores and mention that only one student earned a perfect score, the class often asks, was it Walker? And while scores are never shared publicly, as the saying goes, if the shoe fits. But Walker isn't just about high achievement. What makes her so remarkable is her humility. When she doesn't score 100%, she smiles and says, I'm human. She sets high standards, embraces challenges, and welcomes the growth that comes with learning. Walker's impact reaches far beyond the classroom. She's a proud member of the Green Team and the GV Cares Team. She competes in volleyball, soccer, basketball, and dance. She volunteers her Saturdays to teach dance to students from underserved communities. She's a Girl Scout, a gardener, a cook, and famously a father-daughter beach frisbee champion. I know. But what truly defines Walker is her heart. Her family describes her as someone with a strong moral compass, a natural curiosity, and a big heart for others. She notices when someone needs a friend or a helping hand, even her principal, and she steps in without hesitation. She's a trusted sister, a loving granddaughter, and the kind of person who meets each day with optimism and joy. She is game for anything Big Sister throws her way, and also for extended pillow talk sessions when they trade real thoughts and feelings before falling asleep. She's there for her brother when he needs someone to shag balls, or when her grandmother needs someone to eat her latest batch of cookies. I'm here too. And she's there. Her family shared that 11 years ago, she completed their family, no question. It's a proud cheer from Mom and Dad when she aces a test, or makes the team, or lands the part she wanted in the musical, but she also gets checked by life, falls short, and has fears. But she's brave and works through it with the type of courage that is earned. And her Mom and Dad expressed that it is ridiculously good to be around that type of resilience. Walker does the right thing even when no one's watching. She's grounded, courageous, and resilient. She stands firm in her values and leads by example with kindness, with integrity, and with grace. Walker, I'm blown away by what you're able to accomplish in 24 hours. We are so proud of you. You inspire those around you with your strength, your warmth, and your unwavering spirit. Congratulations on this very well-deserved honor.
Before I present you with a certificate, is there anyone from your family here in the audience?
My mom, my brother, and my grandma.
Are they the ones smiling ridiculous? I'm sure they're very proud, and I can see why. It's so great that you get such a big audience to hear. So on behalf of my colleagues, we present this, recognizing you and a pin, a city pin. And now, if I could get my colleagues down here and we could do a picture. Let's scoot this, like, this way. All right. Scoot it. Mom and Dad, our Mom and Brother and Grandma, come on up too. Down. I don't want to confuse your brother for Dad. That'd be bad. That happened to my brother. Very, very good. We're all in awe of you. So, all right, so there's our camera. Thank you. Okay. All right, you can skip back down for a minute. Okay. Madam City Clerk, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Tarnay?
Here.
Councilmember Sherrillian?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Lester?
Here.
Mayor Haworth?
Here. Okay. I just want to make a comment, kind of a quick comment, before we start all of our ceremonial items. There's a lot of you here. It's one of the great privileges as mayor and as council to recognize what's really great in our community. And I think what's really nice tonight is you're going to see sort of a cross-generational effort here. So I want everybody to understand that even if somebody's doing something really different than you, pay attention, and let's give them the credit they deserve. So, wait, but before we do that, we did skip over the approval of the... No, I didn't skip over anything. I was perfect. Okay, hold on. I am looking. I have one thing. Okay, so, I'm glad my colleagues laughed at that obvious joke. Okay, so, so for our first ceremonial, May is, you know, there's lots of things that May is a month of. It's, you know, it's Asian-American, you know, Pacific Islander History Month. It's Jewish Heritage History Month, but it's also Mental Health Awareness Month. And to that end, I would really appreciate it if Beach Cities Health District Board Member Michelle Bolat and Youth Advisor Leilani Tron will come down, because they have something for us, and we have something for them. You can, yeah, you can come on down, come on down to here.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and all the council and all the audience here. As the mayor mentioned, this is a very proud moment for us. Here, I am the president of Beach Cities Health District, and I hope many of you in the room know who we are and what we do. But it's in partnership with cities such as Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach, that we recognize May as Mental Health Awareness Month. And mental health and substance abuse is our, one of our very high priorities, number-one priorities for our Beach Cities. This year's continuation of the Mental Health is Health campaign focuses on social connection. And we need a lot more Walkers in this world to combat what's next, and that's the loneliness effects of our being with our, than the impact on physical and mental health. And we know that the 2023 Gallup Well-being Index reported nearly 1 in 5 of us in Beach Cities residents having little or no connection to other people. It's become so common nationally that former U.S. Surgeon General Vivek Murthy called it "an urgent public health concern." So, in observance of Mental Health Awareness Month this May, BCHD is encouraging all of us in the community to combat loneliness and foster meaningful social interactions. And fulfilling relationships and connecting with each other is so critically important. Initiate those conversations tonight. Start now. And please, visit us at Beach Cities Health District for more information on our mental health awareness. And I do have a proclamation to give to the city, but before I do, I'd like to turn it over to my youth advisor.
Hello. I'm Leilani Tron. I'm a current, oh, sorry, I'm a current junior attending Miracosta High School, and I am a part of the Olacove Youth Advisory Board, which is, as you can tell from my rep on my sweatshirt, Olacove is basically a space created and designed by the youth, which I am a part of, one of those youth that helped create this space where teens from the ages 12 to 25 can really just take a pause from their life and just kind of make friends, make the connections, especially when they're struggling with mental health crises that a lot of youth are facing today, whether that's depression, social anxiety, body dysmorphia, friendship problems, relationship problems. And it's kind of just a place where you can connect and find new friends, or even connect with count, connect with peer support specialists. And they kind of just are there for you. And I've been a teen where, I've been at the point in my life where I just felt like the whole world was against me. And I know what so many teens right now are struggling with, and I know that it's important for your voices to be heard. And so, as a part of the Youth Advisory Board, we have created a team where we all gather around and we kind of just address and talk about these problems and figure out solutions on how we can better our community and help address the problems that every youth faces. And I'm so glad that I've joined Olacove, and I'm so glad that I'm here tonight to speak about it, because it really means a lot to me. It's helped me through some of my darkest phases, especially during COVID, where I was socially isolated. And I'm so glad that we're taking the time to talk about Olacove on this month of May. And, yeah, so, thank you.
I don't, it's, you don't need an appointment. You can just drop in. It's at Beach Cities Health District, which is on Prospect Avenue. There are also counselors there too, right, that you can, yes?
Oh, I was just going to add, there's really, really cool, fun events. You can follow the Instagram page, and there's like Clothing Up Cycle, there's Fun Arts and Crafts, and it's kind of just, if you need a break from your life and you kind of just want to do something fun and do something for yourself, I definitely recommend going. Yeah.
Let's all move in, and we'll exchange the proclamations as we take a picture. So I'll give this to you, and you'll give me, to me. All right. All right. Okay, they are proclamations saying how important it is as a community to be aware of mental health, right?
Yes.
All right, we good? All right. Thank you very, very much. So, it's my absolute, there's, there's a strategy here. It's my absolute pleasure and honor to call down Cindy Strand, who is the founder of Blankets of Love. I mean, Dr. Bolat talked about, you know, mental health and lack of connection and isolation, and how important it is to be involved and find people to be in community with. You know, queue up Blankets of Love, which Cindy's going to tell you about what they do, what you do, but I think it also provides mental health support for all of you. So Cindy?
Thank you very much. Hi, everybody. I am Cindy Strand. I'm a Manhattan Beach resident. I founded Blankets of Love in July of 2016. Jeff is here. He's my husband. Our son, Justin, passed away in January of 2016 from drug addiction. I didn't want to leave that alone and let it go, and so I founded Blankets of Love because he loved his blanket, his baby blanket, so much, and I wanted to give back to the community and find a way to memorialize him at the same time. So we founded, and at the first, it was me alone, then it was me and one other person. And today, it's grown into a group of about 45 women that come every Monday and Thursday as they can, and we knit and crochet baby blankets, and most of those are given to an organization in Los Angeles called Good Plus Foundation. They, in turn, then make sure the blankets are sent out to the people in the community of Los Angeles that truly need them. And our motto is "Made with love and donated in hope." And our hope is that all the babies will be wrapped in the warmth of a baby blanket. But I have to tell you, if it weren't for these women, and I want all of you to raise your hand, please, right now, please, raise your hand. If it weren't for these women, this would not be possible. We wouldn't be here. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you've done and continue to do, your commitment, your loyalty. They buy all their own supplies. I don't, I don't supply them with anything. This is what they do because they love to help and give to the community. And I also want to thank the City Council, Mayor Haworth, all of you, because you've been so supportive over all these years, and you continue to be supportive. So thank you very much.
If you all indulge me, I would love all of the women to come up here. We have certificates for you. We want to honor you, because you're doing something for other people. And also, the act of sitting together knitting, crocheting, talking is really also so powerful. So, if my colleagues, okay, so, and I know all y'all soccer players are going to be patient because we're going to be doing this for you guys, right? All right. All right. So, as they're walking down, I'm going to read off their names. I'm going to stand over here. There's no room for me. Colleagues, can you hear me? All right, Joe, are you ready? Joe.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm trapped back here.
You are trapped. Make it out. It's so wonderful. All right. Let's not clap till the end so that we can all hear, because I'm quite a bit older than most of people. The audience, kids, all right. Laura Barbado. Julie Bisgelia. Paula Brissette. Okay.
Cindy Strand.
Laura Barbado, if you, the women can raise your hands. She's not here. Julie Bisgelia. Paula Brissette. Paula's here. Julie's not here. Thanks, Cindy. Paula's in front. Suzie Coffin. Back there. Kathy Churchwell. Nancy, okay, Nancy Cook.
Nancy Cook, not here.
Suzie Dismuke.
There we go.
Rosalyn Divinity. What a wonderful name. Marcia Ensminger. She's behind you. Ann Garrett. Right there. Linda Glazza. Not here. Ellie Horns. Ellie is here. Rhonda Engelmann. Linda Ivy. Christina Caballo. Is Christina here? No. Karen LaBelle. Okay. Carol Les. Jackie Loper. Jackie Loper. Judy Mann. Penny Mason. Oh, over to the left. Marcy Matea, Mateika, right next to her. Andrea Miller. Catherine Nall. You guys are doing great. Joe, David, thank you. Barbara Rovetti. Barbara's not here. Sylvia Rayner. Amy Roberts. Okay. Lorna Ross.
Well, you know, if they weren't here, we'd have to, like, move it to Hermosa.
Yeah, we'd have to. Janice Rudolph. Right in front row. Mimi Ralph. Burel Savikas. Right in front. Carol Schoendienst. Joyce DePanic. She's here. Carrie Walker. Linda West. Alice, Alice Williams. Back to your left. Maria Walma. Not here. Lynn Zeeman. All the way over here, and... Everybody be patient, because after I read this last name, we're going to do a picture with a colleague. And Janet Zimmerman. And Cindy, I didn't, I didn't, you didn't say how many blankets you guys have made.
We celebrated, three weeks ago, I believe, 5,000 blankets made.
See if we can do this. Colleagues, are you all here? I'm just observing. I don't know if we'll be able to, okay.
No photobombs, they see you right there.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. Be careful walking back, but...
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So, interesting, just to let you know, our website is www.blankestoflove.southbay.com. We meet on Mondays and Thursdays from 3 to 5 at the Jocelyn Center, and you're welcome to join us.
I appreciate, everybody's being so patient. And I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. So now, it's, it's very exciting. I would like Kristin Skinner, the Regional Commissioner for AYSO.
Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, thank you for the opportunity to attend this evening to celebrate six amazing teams. Krista Skinner and the Regional Commissioner for Region 18, serving Manhattan and Hermosa Beach. As you may know, AYSO is an all-volunteer organization, and our region provides a fun, fair, and safe place for over 3,000 players to play soccer every year. That's roughly 10% of the city's population on any given weekend. Our region's consistently one of the top two largest regions in the United States, and we appreciate the partnership we have with the Parks and Recreation Department in Manhattan Beach and our support team of Archie, Jeff, Paula, and Susanna that allow us to offer a recreational soccer program accessible to everyone that wants to play the beautiful game. Although we don't measure the success of our program and championships, we are extraordinarily proud to present the 16th for you, both each won the AYSO Western States Championship in their respective divisions, which is both a region and tournament record. We had to buy a bigger banner this year to put up at Marine and Village to put all of the teams on. The Western States Championship consists of teams from 235 regions in the four sections that cover Washington, Oregon, California, and Nevada, containing a total of over 200,000 players. These six teams represented our region across league and All-Star play. The 12 You Girls League Team, where are my lunatics, up in the back? These 12 players began playing together last September, winning our Local Beach Cup Championship, the Area 1D Tournament of Champions, placing second in the Section 1 Championship, and finally winning Western States. It's truly an achievement for our league teams to progress to Western States. The 14 You Girls League Team, there's some of you guys, where's the rest of my, is that just you guys? That's who you're, okay. Blue Fire also began playing together last September, winning the Beach Cup, the Area 1D Tournament of Champions, the Section 1 Championship, and then Western States. One of their team members cannot be here today, but I believe is watching the live stream. Phoebe, who's also the head coach's daughter, was diagnosed with a brain tumor and was hospitalized prior to Western States. After a successful surgery, she's currently recovering, and I was truly amazed by the composure of this team as they came together to win in her honor. The first of our four All-Star teams, the 12 You Girls Venom, I saw Venom up on the top, were formed... This team was formed after the end of the fall season, and their journey included winning the Area 1D All-Star Tournament, placing second in the Section 1 Championship, and winning the Western States Championship, beating South LA, a longtime region rival. Our second All-Star team, 12 You Boys, the Mambas, had a similar journey, but a great sweep, winning the Area 1D All-Star Tournament, Section 1 Championship, and the Western States Championship. Our third All-Star team, 14 Girls MB Black, faced their toughest competition in our other All-Star Girls Team, some of which are sitting here also, tying them at home, but still winning the Area 1D All-Star Tournament, facing them again in the finals of the Section 1 Championship, that went to penalty kicks to move on, and then finished strong by winning the Western States Championship. And last, but certainly not least, 14 You Boys KSA were undefeated in their run, winning the Area 1D All-Star Tournament, Section 1 Championship, and the Western States Championship. Many of the players on this team, along with several of the others, are repeat winners from previous years that had so much fun, they keep coming back. Thank you for recognizing their hard work and dedication this evening, and thank you for the city's continuing support of the fields and facilities that we're lucky enough to have access to to support this recreational program.
We cannot possibly call you all down here. So what, I mean, but you're all coming down here. Don't worry. So what we're going to do is we're going to do one team at a time, and you'll come down, and your coaches will come down, and we'll take pictures, and then you'll go, and then we'll do another team. So, I would love the Lunatics Team, and I'm, but I'm going to call you, I'm going to call you guys down by name, okay? So first, I'm going to call the, I'm just going to call the coaches, you can give those at the end. Assistant Coach Ron Melendez, Assistant Coach Adam Reese, and Head Coach Chris Talbot, come on down. I'm going to be the main person. Let's do a big clap at the end. I know, just try. So the players. Maya Karim. Maya. Alexis Lemieux. Come on down, guys. Maya Karim. Alexis Lemieux. Eza Ludecki. Ella Melendez. Skylar Osuna. Lucy Reichel. Me and Lex Reichel, you're doing great. Skylar Reese. Marla Talbot. And Willow Young. Everybody, everybody will get their certificates and...
All right, Lucy?
Yes, or the coach can give it, however. We're going to do pictures. The hardware's really so impressive. We, I am in awe. I just am in awe, so, oh, very nice. All right, so everybody look over there. Come on. If you're a champion, look over there.
Ms. Pauline? Yep. One, two. We need one, two. Okay. One, two. Great, and one for the city.
Okay, hold on. I lost my list. Okay, Blue Fire. Okay, Blue Fire. West Head Coach Patrick Woben, if he's here, come on down. Come on now. Come on now. Would you get Britley and her kids? They tell them what you can and... Lennon Fortman. Stella Freeland. That means quiet down. And I want, I want you guys to be quite, not to hear me, but to hear the names of these people who have worked so hard. So, I did Stella Freeland, Sienna Cadera, Shane Massey, Michaela Reese, Charlize Rico, Eloise Rumager, Rose Walsh, Audrey West, and Phoebe Woben. Let's now, let's hear it for them.
One for Ally.
All right, thank you very, very much. All right, so remember, we're gonna be quiet so we can hear everybody's names, right? I'm sorry, I sound like a teacher, or whatever I sound like, so... Okay, All-Star Venom. Venom? Come on down. Assistant Coach Jim Couture and Head Coach, Head Coach Chris Talbot. Y'all can come down, and I'll read your names. Talar Adishian. Candace Christensen. Charlotte Gilland. Ali Halu. Elora Couture. Pardon me if I, if I say the name incorrectly. Madison Cratz. Skylar Loader. Mia McCoy. Elise Myers. Peyton Myers. Marlo Talbot. And Justine Tyne Wolfgram. And we're gonna come this way, athletes, this way, because we're gonna line up and look out that way. I mean, we have to recognize excellence like this, right? It's pretty remarkable. Okay, now we're gonna move to the All-Star Mambas Team. With our coaches, Assistant Coach James DeFalco and Head Coach James Moser. If you're a Mamba, come on down. Okay? You can wave if you want, but Kai Billit. Noah Dax. Connor Deary. Connor DeFalco. Levi Iyer. Andrew Futch. George Labella. Sammy Lasco. Jack Moser. Lucas Pasula. Fidel Sanchez, and Beau Venning. It looks like there's two more teams. We might have to have a special meeting next year if you guys keep on winning so much, which is great. All right, the All-Star MB Black Team. All right, guys, you wanna hear everybody's names? I was wondering what that noise was. I was thinking, why are they wearing... It's all their dirty medals! It's amazing! All right. Quincy Dandrea. Timon Doger. Mary Floss. Axie Herbert. Emily Key. Darcy Marko. Candice Lee. Madison Loader. Ellie Mathis. Kira McCracken. Diana Sollich. Ava Shay. Lauren Tran. Great. Okay, thank you. Okay. It appears we have one team left. We have one team left. I know, I know, it's the All-Star KSAT. Is that what they're called?
I can't tell you what that is.
Yeah, don't tell me anything. All right. It really is the medals. It's all these medals. I thought everybody was wearing jingle bells now or something. All right. Assistant Coach Andrew Werhan and Head Coach Tim Harris, come down, and gentlemen, I, you guys should come down too. Braden Balick. Jackson Billett. Tyler Buxton. Colton Cantrell, I'm gonna walk over here, because they're coming that way. Gage Harris. Not all of them are here, but I'm reading all their names. Brody Kakuk. Lucas Krems. Marco Olson. Blake Paddock. Silas Rizkala. Tyler Sotsky. Jackson Van. Valentino Visia. And Owen Werhan. The AYSO 14, Under 14 Boys All-Star KSAT Team.
Archie.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you so much.
Again, thank you all for being here as we honor each of the organizations, the Beach Seas Health District, Alco Blankets of Love, and AYSO. Such a culture of excellence.
IBOL.
And let's, you can talk in the lobby, but please then shut the doors, because, yeah, we still have things to do. Yes. Great job. There was a heck of a soccer match on TV earlier today, I've got to tell you. It's true, Barcelona and Inter Milan.
Wapping 0-0 or something?
No, 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 no.
Okay, recess?
All right, here we go. So I wanna, I do wanna thank my colleagues for indulging me. It is a lot, especially with the exuberance of youth, but I think it is, today especially, I find it very important and necessary to treasure these young people and to salute them and, and, you know, revel in their joy. So I'll leave it there at that for this moment, before, as we move into the rest of our meeting. So right now, I need an approval of the agenda. It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Lesser and seconded by Councilmember Frank Quinn.
Sorry, is this where we pull an item?
You can now, yes. Wait, we're, we are, we've gotta move approval of the agenda, but it appears we wanna move, pull something, yes?
Item number six, please.
Okay.
So the motion would be to approve the agenda subject to putting item number six as an item that we are hearing from, as removed from the consent.
Okay, are there any, are there, I was yelling there for a while. I know you all know that. Are there any other items that you're pulling? Are anyone's pulling? No? Okay, so, call for the question. Motion passes 5-0. So, now it's time for City Council and community organization announcements of upcoming events, which are usually one minute per person. I would like to make some comments at this time regarding what I was alluding to a little bit earlier. So, on behalf, this is very serious, on behalf of my colleagues, the entire City Council, I wanna express profound sadness and heartbreak regarding the tragic death of Bron Levy on Saturday night. Our hearts go out to Bron's family, friends, the entire Loyola High School community during this immensely difficult time. And he, for those who may not know, Bron was killed in a, he was a pedestrian, he was killed in a traffic accident on Saturday night. I'm giving, I'm making some comments now, because we've received many, many, many valid concerns about safety on Sepulveda Boulevard, with, with a lot of input as well, which is very helpful, but particularly that stretch south of Manhattan Beach Boulevard, which tragically has been the site of multiple fatal accidents in recent years, and just three traffic fatalities involving pedestrians since December. So obviously, we take this very seriously, as does the whole city and staff, and our traffic engineer, of course, committed, we're committed to improving safety for everybody. And you need to know that our traffic engineer has been aware and has been urgently reaching out to Caltrans for a while now, and we are now working with our state senator Ben Allen as of today to get Caltrans to listen to us, because they must understand the urgency. And they need to act with urgency and implement robust safety protocols. And we at the city are going to leverage every valuable or available, I'm sorry, resource to continue to advocate for those measures that protect our residents. Our Police Department Traffic Bureau and patrol personnel will be conducting high-visibility traffic enforcement, focusing on primary collision factors such as speed along that stretch road. And we'll work with our regional partners on either side of us to conduct DUIs, saturation patrols in Manhattan Beach. So, many, many people have written into us, and understandably so, please continue to, because a lot of you have given us really good ideas as well, because, you know, I mean, I shouldn't have to say it, but public safety is always so important, but, and anytime something like this happens, it's incumbent upon all of us to do more than we can, so that this never has to happen again. If you do have ideas, you feel free to, you know, email the City Council, but you can also share your, you know, your ideas with our traffic engineering department at traffic@manhattanbeach.gov. So, I wanna thank you for listening, and I think even this young man did not live in our community or in Manhattan Beach, but he has affected so many, so let us have a moment of silence now, instead of, as we adjourn, let's have a moment of silence now in honor of Bron Levy. Thank you. All right, so we, other, there will be other community announcements, and now would be the important time to do that. So this is community announcements of upcoming events of up to one minute per person. Thank you. Hi, Adam.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council. My name's Adam Feinstein. I'm the Planning Manager here with the Community Development Department. With the acquisition of the property at 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard, the city has expanded its opportunities to provide parking and other public, public-serving uses in the downtown area beyond what was available at Parking Lot 3. While the interim uses of 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard will be discussed later this evening, establishment of a long-term vision for the use of the two properties requires significant public input and engagement. To begin that process, staff will be hosting a community meeting on Wednesday, May 21st, at 6:00 PM at the Manhattan Heights Community Center located at 1600 Manhattan Beach Boulevard. The community meeting aims to gather public input on the redevelopment of these sites, aligning with the general plan's goals of enhancing parking, streetscapes, and small business viability. Your input and engagement will assist in shaping the conversation around the once-in-a-lifetime generation, or, I'm sorry, once-in-a-generation opportunity we have, and we look forward to seeing you at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Very exciting. Bobby Bell.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Members, City Officials, Jeff, my name is Bobby. I am the WM Recycling Educator dedicated to the beautiful city of Manhattan Beach. Just a couple of quick updates. A week ago Saturday, we had our first paper shut of the year. It dumped rain the entire time. I was not dressed appropriately, but it was great. I stopped counting cars at 250 as soon as we get the tonnage report in. I'll send that over to Mr. Lee's office, so I'm sure he'll make you guys aware. But it was a great event. Thank you to the chief. She had her volunteer police officers out there to help direct 250 cars in the rain, more than that. And then we actually had to cut it off, because we filled the truck for the first time in my three years here in Manhattan Beach. And telling people, "I'm so sorry, you've been in line for 20 minutes, you have to go on," is much better coming from one of her volunteer police officers than it is from this guy. Last, this past Saturday, we had our first composting class up at Polywog Park. It drizzled, but Lisa Ryder had a great class, sold a couple of worm bins to people. She said it was a small but intimate, and she had a great time. My new project right now that I'm really jumping on is American Martyr has joined in on the Zero Waste Lunch Program. Vice Principal Brian up there is spearheading it, and I'm out there helping him, and it's very exciting, the kids are all on board. That's all I got. Wishing you guys all God's blessings. That's all I got, wishing you guys all God's blessings.
Thanks, Bobby. Okay.
Good evening, Libby Bretthwaite, Acting Finance Director. And one of the, our top three priorities in the finance department this year is to enhance our financial transparency efforts. So I wanted to share two recently completed efforts that we have. The first is our popular annual financial report. It is a condensed version of our annual financial report. That's a couple hundred pages, so this is a 12-page snapshot of all of our finances. So we hope you view it on our website. You could also pick up a copy here at City Hall. And the other item that you see on the screen is our new Open Finance Transparency Portal. So thank you, Martha, for pulling it up as we speak. If you scroll down a little, you could see highlights of our revenues and expenditures. And clicking on the blue boxes there that say Explore Revenues, Explore Expenditures, drills down into those by fund, by category. You can see various charts, whether it's bar chart, pie chart, whatever, however you like to see it. There are several options there and lots of drill-down features. This is all integrated with our financial software, our ERP system. So it's maintained with a one-day lag based on what our actuals show in our finance system. So this is available to the public on our city website, and we hope everyone checks it out. And feel free to contact us with any questions.
It's beautiful. I mean, also, it's very functional and important, but that, the home image up there, talk about open transparency, it's like the perfect, the light gate, it's so good.
Yes, I'm very proud to highlight it and present it tonight. However, I wish, I can't take full credit, our accounting division worked really hard on this. And so I'm sure they'll be glad to hear your feedback. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Hi, good evening, mayor, members of the council. My name is Josh Murray. I am here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. I'd like to let the community know about our next three sessions of our series Toddler and Me Yoga on Wednesdays, May 7th, 14th, and 21st from 10:15 to 10:45 AM. Children ages zero to five and their parent or caregiver are invited to participate or to practice basic poses with yoga instructor Petra Pochman. Toddlers and their caregivers, with any level of experience are welcome in this class for beginners. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Hi, I'm Diane Levitt. I'm the Vice Commissioner of the Library Commission. And I just want to let you know, following up on Josh, that on Saturday, May 17th, we are going to celebrate the 10th anniversary of the building of our beautiful Manhattan Beach Public Library with a talk at Miracosta by Chef Roy Choi. It is fully sold out, the 1,500-seat auditorium, but there is a waiting list, and I would encourage people who are on the waiting list to come and show up because, as we know, 1,500 people who sign up for a free event don't always come. So whilst, the first 500 registered people who sit down are going to get free taco from Roy Choi's taco truck that will be there, not taco truck, but food truck. And anyway, we're very excited to be celebrating the library with such a big event and grateful for your support of that event. Thanks.
Yeah, he's a big deal. This is a big deal. Okay, other community events? Okay. It's okay, take your time. No, no more.
No ankles.
And actually, hello. And I am here, I'm Liz Lefoun. And I just wanted to point out that when this leadership project was first created, I did not have to wear cheaters and I was seen with a mask. Good evening, mayor, council members and public. My name is Liz Lefoun, and I am here on behalf of the Leadership Manhattan Beach Class of 2000. I would like to extend this invitation to the entire Manhattan Beach community to join us for a special event, the Millennium Time Capsule Retrieval Ceremony on Saturday, June 28th at 2:00 PM. The event will begin at the Wave Art Sculpture. That is a public art piece that's housed the time capsule for the past 25 years on the Veterans Parkway just across from the Jocelyn Center. After the outdoor reunion at the Wave, we will move into the Jocelyn Center to reveal the contents of the capsule. Even the class members do not know what ultimately was placed in the time capsule 25 years ago. It's free to attend, and light refreshments will be served afterward at the Jocelyn Center. The Class of 2000 has been excitedly planning this event, which began as a student-led project in 2000. We are truly looking forward to having past and current city officials, residents, LMB alums, sponsors of the project, friends and family celebrate this fun moment of community history with us. Our invitation includes a link and a QR code where community members can RSVP and participate in a contest to guess what might be inside the time capsule. We would be so appreciative as well if this could be included on the city's digital calendar to help us reach more community members. I will be back again to give more tidbits and teasers. I'd like to also include or encourage residents to check out the Leadership Manhattan Beach website at leadershipmb.org, where you can read about the program and past projects as well. And I just really thank you for considered, your continued support of the Leadership Manhattan Beach Project and, and just have to say personally, this has just been so fun. I, you know, when you're 25, you don't know that you're going to be. And so here we are, right? So thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment or community announcements before we move on to public comments? Okay, so now we move on to public comments, which are three minutes per person. And speakers may provide public comments on any matter that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, excuse me, including items on the agenda. So are there any, any public comments?
Please.
Come on, if you're able to come down, if not, we can bring you a microphone. Okay? You never know.
Good evening, mayor and city council people. Thank you so much for doing what you do. I've been a public servant in the past, and I know that it takes away from your families. And that's difficult.
Exactly.
I love the planet, and I've been cleaning the beach for over 20 years here. So by now, I know pretty much what, what kind of things I'm going to pick up. But in December, when we had the Christmas fireworks, since I clean on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Sundays, after the fireworks, the company left a lot of debris. And I'm sure most of it went into the ocean on Sunday and Monday because I only clean on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and there was still a lot of fireworks debris. Now, we've known because of studies that 83% of the dead shoreline birds on our shorelines, and I'm talking about Alaska to California, 83% have died of plastic asphyxiation. And so it's important that we alert the people that put on the fireworks show to send somebody or to have someone clean up the debris that's going to go into our ocean. We need to keep our oceans and shorelines clean. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and we will. Sad, but I really appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Now come on down to the microphone if you're going to speak.
Hi, my name is Donsley Westernoff. I'm a citizen in Manhattan Beach, and this is actually my first city council meeting. So thank you for opening the forum to us. While I was sitting here, I was reflecting and appreciating what a beautiful city we live in. I genuinely appreciate you recognizing every single person that had created a blanket to the winners that we celebrated in AYSO. And with that, I come as a heavy heart, as you acknowledged, about what is going on on Sepulveda. Not only for what has tragically happened this weekend, but for what has been happening. And I recognize that you all feel the same pain and sorrow as we do. It feels a little bit unfair to us as citizens to wait for Caltrans. I spent so much time today reading about Caltrans. I have an uncle that's a civil engineer at Caltrans District Four. I know we're District Seven. It is a handcuff and not one that we should suffer through. So I'm urging, I'm asking for us as a city to do better, to do better than Caltrans and to know that we can do. And what that looks like, I would appreciate if you all would consider having this as a continued agenda item to let us as citizens know to feel safe in our community. I understand it's not going to happen overnight, but I think a lot more can happen. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Please come down, you don't have to, you don't have to raise your hand.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and council city members. I'm going to read my email that I did send out this morning. My name is Tanya Monahan. I love this community. I'm deputy editor of South Bay Magazine, and I just always support our community. And I'm so, I feel so blessed to be a part of it. I also have three children, one of which was with Bron the night that this happened. In just the past few months, our city has lost two children. Ford Savella and just recently Bron Levy. A couple of months before that, I also was at Gelson's the day the pedestrian was also killed. Three lives taken along the same stretch of Sepulveda Boulevard, as we've been discussing. This is not a tragic coincidence. It has clear signaled that the current conditions on this major thoroughfare are unsafe and unacceptable. We cannot afford to wait for another tragedy to take action. I know that there is some, you know, whether it's Caltrans or the city's responsibility, really, we just need to work together. I just don't want this to get blocked by whose responsibility is this? I am very willing, along with, I know many, many people, we've been talking to so many of our friends, everybody wants to help out with this and make our city safer. So I implore you to take immediate action to make these roads safer. You know, whether that's putting in, you know, flashing lights, speed limits, maybe higher ticketing within that stretch, improving pedestrian visibility, increasing traffic enforcement, installing barriers or an overpass, reviewing DUI checkpoints and driver education programs. We don't want Manhattan Beach to remember it for preventable deaths, especially of our young. We want this community to act swiftly and compassionally when it's clear that lives are at risk. So with that, I just would also like to say I'm, I'm happy to support in any way that I can. We have a lot of members that are really ready and willing, and we just don't want this to happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, and I'm sorry for everyone's trouble.
So on Saturday, my 17-year-old, redundant union Chadwick, all had prom. Most of our children were out late, and we wake up to a nixal at 2:00 AM that Bron Levy had died. Not that we knew it was Bron, a child had died. That is never a circumstance that's going to be okay. What I love about our community, what I've appreciated from the start, is that we are very tight-knit. And so at 6:00 AM, I started getting texts and messages. I'm a physician in this community, and I have very close friends who all have teenagers. And I'm looking at you, Nina. We cannot let this happen again. Two children in three months is completely unacceptable. Our children are 17 and 18. They need their independence. These are pedestrians. They weren't doing anything wrong, killed by drunk drivers. So I really feel like it's a civic responsibility that we do something to take drunk drivers off the roads. This is Manhattan Beach. We can do whatever we need to do to keep our children safe, and we need to do more. Thank you.
I want to be sure if there's any other public comments here in chambers. I give you an opportunity before I turn it over. Come on down to the Zoom world.
It's a reasonably somber subject. I'm sorry to talk about something more mundane, but anyway, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. My name is Jan Holtz. I'm a 38-year member of this great city. And on a lighter note, it aged me tonight to see 100 soccer players here. That was like 20 years ago for me. Anyway, I'm here to update you on our progress about the hotel, to build the first new hotel here in Manhattan Beach in 20 years. And I wanted to highlight kind of where we've been since the initial Sepulveda Initiative was formed in 2017, that was eight years ago, and re-zoned Sepulveda. We went through the process, unanimous council final approval in June of '21. Lawsuits with Quinn's help were all dismissed in December of '22. And all of that, five years from the initial start of the Sepulveda Initiative. Since that time, I've proceeded diligently on several fronts to push forward and get ready for construction. First, we've submitted complete construction documents, have plan check corrections, are ready to resubmit pending our financing. Secondly, we've commenced demolition of, of the site in May of 2024, a year ago, and can, we can complete that work in about two weeks' time pending our financing. Permits for shoring and excavation are ready to issue pending our financing. So anyway, I sound a bit like a broken record, but thirdly and most importantly, have been my efforts to raise the capital required to fund the construction of the project. There's been significant interest from a myriad of sources, at least initially, including both private capital sources as well as institutional, in part due to our location here in the city of Manhattan Beach. There's a very compelling story we tell about the dynamic and rapidly growing coastal LA economy, our proximity to LAX, as well as our desirable upscale and hopefully safe environment here in the wonderful city of Manhattan Beach. But the headwinds have been significant over these past five years, starting with COVID, that to this day leaves the hospitality industry still struggling. Then a period of rapid inflation not seen since the 70s, significantly impacting our building costs, only to be followed by a rapid 500-basis-point increase in short-term interest rates to fund those increased costs all over the last two years. And then the devastating fires this year, whose impact will be felt through the local construction industry for a long time to come. So wow, what else, what else is next? Well, let's try tariffs, all right? So that's, that's the new spin today. Anyway, all these events have been impacted significantly, and I can report that our project has attracted good investor interest, but these many hurdles continue to plague hesitant capital markets. So I'm here to propose to you that we start a discussion about a specific way we can work together and move the project forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for these three minutes.
Thank you. Other public comments here in chambers before I turn it over to Zoom? Okay, city clerk, our assistant city clerk?
No requests on Zoom.
Okay, so I'm going to close some public comments, but yes, I'm going to close public comments. Okay. Moving to the consent calendar.
Madam President, can I, can I just make a comment? And I, I see all you moms out there, we all have kids the same ages. And so, you know, this weekend, I know all of us have been reeling from this news and coming on the heels of Ford's death just, you know, in January. It's, it's absolutely devastating. And I can assure you that all of us sitting up here and our police department, our fire department, we've reached out to, you know, our neighboring cities, so we will be working towards solutions. And, and you're right, the, the solutions can't come quickly enough because we've already lost three pedestrians within a year, one-year span. So I just want you to all know that we are working really hard to try to find some solutions. And Caltrans, you know, steps up and helps us if, you know... If, you know, we would appreciate the help, but if not, we're going to keep moving forward. So thank you for all coming. And we hope to have your continued support and involvement as we move forward. Thank you.
It is so top of mind. It's hard to, but we have other business. So I'm so sorry. So yes, you were going to make a motion.
Motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item number six.
Okay, thank you all for your comments. And that's been seconded by Councilmember Franklin. Call for the question.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right, so Councilmember Sherrillian, I believe you called item number six.
I did, and thank you. Hopefully this will be very quick. I just wanted to get a little bit more elaboration on this item. Mainly, I know it's authored by Human Resources Director, but maybe it's more of a question for Director of Public Works or maybe even Finance. You know, we have another item later on in general business, item number 11, to potentially talk about water rates and sewer and those type of things. I just want to, you know, comment on this item because this potentially $650,000 contract will be embedded into the review of that study. Even though it's offset by salary savings, those positions are on the books and those will be also part of the study. So it's more of a, you know, confirmation or elaborate, you know, to have either Public Works or, you know, someone talk about that.
Okay.
So.
So do you want to, so the Director of Public Works is here?
Does that make sense, what I asked?
Your question makes a lot of sense.
Okay, thank you.
Eric Lee, your Public Works Director, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. This item, as you mentioned, is being carried by our Human Resources Department, but it's really to provide resources for the Public Works Department. We operate three utilities in the city, a water system, a sewer system, and a storm drain system. And oftentimes, when we have someone out on some type of leave or we have an unanticipated vacancy, we can overcome that with either overtime or temporary help. But there are some times when we actually need to bring someone in with a higher level of skill that requires special experience and training or certifications. We would go to an outside temporary employment agency, in this case Water Talent, to bring those types of trained professionals in. So for example, our water treatment plant, it takes a high degree of experience and certifications to be able to operate that. If we had a water plant operator that went out for a medical leave or whatnot, we could contact Water Talent and they could send us somebody who has all the right training. Doesn't necessarily know the Manhattan Beach way, but could, has the requisite skills to learn that and help us with continuity operations. And so that's essentially what this contract does. It allows us to bring in experienced, trained, certified staff in specialized positions on an as-needed basis when we have those types of either unanticipated vacancies or other staffing needs. As relates to the water rates item that's later on the agenda, I think that what we're asking for water rates is really going to be looking at our ongoing operating and capital expenditures and how that should affect rates. This is really, when we utilize this contract, it's being funded by salary savings or other types of savings we have in the department. And I don't think it is going to be the classic type of expense that would be in that rate study.
Okay, I just wanted that clarified because in the, you know, the rate studies I'm familiar with, you know, they take the number of positions that are budgeted and those are fully funded in the rate study. And this would be looked upon as a operating contract. So that's, you know, maybe it's, unless it's a little bit different, but the positions that are in that water rate study that go into the actual resident rates has the full employee headcount of the water operation in addition to all these additional contracts. Even though this says no budgetary impact, and that is correct because you have salary savings, but in turn, this will ultimately be an operating expense when you do a study.
Your concern is understood. I think we'll need to make sure that if we're doing those studies, that whatever firm we hire to do them understands that this is not above and beyond authorized staffing or operations. And this is purely to have an additional tool to get the job done.
Fair enough. You answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, so now we have to, we need, oh, public comments, actually. Thank you, unless there's more questions for the Director. All right, so I'm going to open up public comment for this item only, item number six. No need comments in chambers. Okay, are there any comments from Zoom or questions?
No request on Zoom.
Okay, so I see the motion has been moved by Councilmember Sherrillian and seconded by Councilwoman Ternay. Call for the question.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, all right. So moving on to public hearings, there are no public hearings. General business. So item number nine is the 2025 Annual Appointments to the Boards and Commissions. So let me clear, I need, we need a moment here to switch notebooks out. I want you all to understand that for tonight's meeting, I had three notebooks this size, just saying. So I have to move them around. Let me move them here. Notebook number two. Okay. Uh-oh, wait a minute. So we have a process here that we follow. And Madam City Clerk, do you want to tell us about this or do you want me to just do it?
Well, you could do it, but I did want to.
Oh, Brianna, great. Let's have Brianna do it.
Yes, I did want to thank Brianna. Brianna is our Deputy City Clerk. This was the highest number of applicants we received in all my years here, 73 applicants.
So for how many spots?
Nine positions. And Brianna did an excellent job keeping them informed through the whole process. And I also want to thank Ally and Kristen. I don't think we would have had that many applicants without the excellent outreach. So thank you for that. And with that, Brianna, we'll lead you through the process.
Okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Brianna Conteras, Deputy City Clerk. On April 22nd, the City Council conducted interviews for the Boards and Commissions. The City Clerk's office received 73 applications, nine of which were withdrawn, leaving 64 for consideration. Tonight, you will be filling nine upcoming vacancies. If there are no questions from City Council, I recommend we first open the floor to public comments before beginning the appointment process.
Okay, are there any questions for Brianna before we?
I just have a comment, and that is, again, for the members of the public. Can you repeat how many applicants there were?
Yes, 73.
73. And therefore, how many adult seats?
Six.
And of those adult seats, how many are incumbents that seek to be reappointed, including chairs of those commissions?
Five.
How many student applications?
Student applications, we received 29.
And for how many positions?
For three.
Okay. So on the one hand, this is really a wonderful occurrence in that there's so much interest by our residents in participating in our government and being part of our governance here. On the other hand, this makes it extremely difficult because we have so many capable applicants. It's getting me very difficult. I think I'm speaking for all of us. And I think that just needed to be said at the outset, that if somebody has applied and doesn't get it this time, please try again. Please understand the challenges that we have in making these selections tonight.
Yes, and I'll have some comments when we begin the process. But I do think we should open up to public comments first? No, thank you. I really, I appreciate you framing it because it is, it's a problem. But it's wonderful, but it's a problem. Okay. Are there any public comments regarding this item, item number nine? Anything on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay, so where would you like to begin?
Perfect. So we will begin with the Parks and Recreation Commission, Member at Large Seat Number One, currently held by Russ Allen. He is seeking reappointment.
Okay. And so it is, if I may, it is really just the hardest thing we do because to, you know, we only get to nominate, it's just the hardest thing we do. Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Franklin.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Russ Alain. Alain?
Allen?
Russ Allen. I know, I know Russ.
Oh. I thought maybe you were losing your marbles for a second.
I wanted to make him nervous.
You made me nervous. Okay, Councilwoman Ternay?
I also want to echo what has been expressed. This has been the hardest thing for me, sitting up in this seat. And if you're an incumbent and I don't nominate you, please just know, you know, I'm battling with allowing more opportunities for people who haven't participated. And that doesn't mean I don't appreciate what you've done and the work that you've put into it. So wanted to say that. So my nomination is Ethan Kaufman.
That was well said. Councilwoman?
Allen?
Okay, okay.
Allen?
And just to keep the discussion, I think I will nominate Kaufman as well. Although, yeah. Kaufman?
Kaufman as well.
Okay, so Allen and Kaufman will move to round one.
Okay, so you can nominate up to two.
Allen and Kaufman.
Allen and Kaufman.
Allen and Kaufman.
All right. I suppose Allen and Kaufman.
Just Allen.
Okay. So Brianna, I could let you say it. Go ahead. You can say it, that they all move, they both move forward.
Yes, so Allen Kaufman move on to round two.
So only one this time. Okay, Councilwoman Sherrillian.
Allen?
And I will go with Allen, Russ Allen.
Russ Allen?
And to make it unanimous, Russ Allen.
Thank you. Well done. And thank you to all, really, so many.
So Russ Allen will be appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission, seat number one.
Yeah, reappointed, right?
Reappointed.
Okay, you're so welcome. Okay, so this is seat number six, which is Member at Large for the Parks and Recreation Commission, correct?
Yeah, so next we have the Parks and Recreation Commission, Member at Large Seat Number Six, currently held by Tracy Wines. She is seeking reappointment.
And I will nominate her, Tracy Wines.
Rita Crabtree-Kampa.
Ethan Kaufman.
Kaufman.
Wines.
Okay.
Okay, so Wines, Tracy Wines, Rita Crabtree, Ethan Kaufman, they move on to round one.
Okay, so Rita and Tracy Wines?
Okay. Nina?
Kaufman. And Rita?
Rita and Wines.
And I will support the incumbent Tracy Wines and Rita Crabtree-Kampa.
And I will do the same, Tracy Wines and Rita Crabtree-Kampa.
So Rita Crabtree-Kampa and Tracy Wines will move on to round two.
Wines for me, please.
Wines? The incumbent Tracy Wines.
Tracy Wines.
And to make it unanimous, Tracy Wines.
Thank you. So Tracy Wines will be reappointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission, seat number six.
Before we move, as we move on to the Parks and Rec Student Representative, I need to make a comment about the students and their comments specifically about Parks and Rec. Mark Lehman is here, our Director of Public, or Parks and Rec, Mark Lehman, everybody. I was so moved by all the students. Well, we were all incredibly impressed by all the students, I think that's safe to say. But it was extraordinary how many of them mentioned specific Parks and Rec programs that had meant something to them. And it wasn't just, you know, some of them was after-school care, some of it was swimming, some of it was soccer. And the students who were interested in serving on Parks and Rec had very specific ideas about what they, what they thought would be important going forward. And I was, I was blown away that this program that has been going on for so long changes people's lives. It impacts their lives. It is so essential. And also, I was so impressed with their specific ideas. So thank you to everybody. So there you go. With that, let's go.
So next, we have the Parks and Recreation Commission Student Representative, seat number seven, currently held by Isabella Jacobson, who will be termed out as it is a one-year term.
I believe I begin and I will echo what the mayor said. This is an extremely difficult choice. There are so many qualified candidates who knew what this commission did, knew what the work plan required, had actually read the minutes of the meetings. It was really extraordinary. I will nominate Katya Haraz.
I'm just looking back. Okay, and I will nominate Jordan Malone.
And I will nominate Tara Kaligian.
And before I turn in my nomination, I just, if any of Colin's friends are watching and if I don't nominate you, please forgive me. This is the hardest, so hard.
I hear eggs are dropping in prices, so eggs are more affordable.
I nominate Ishan Agarwal.
Okay, wait a minute. Where is, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Nichols? Zoe Nichols.
Oh, yeah.
They're all fantastic.
They're so, they had such great things.
Okay, so Katya Haraz, Jordan Malone, Tara Kaligian, Ishan Agarwal, and Zoe Nichols will move forward to round one.
Okay, and I will do my Jordan Malone and Ishan Agarwal, who was a veteran gardener at the ripe age of 15.
And I will nominate Tara Kaligian again and Zoe Nichols.
And I will nominate Jordan Malone and Ishan Agarwal.
Zoe Nichols and Tara Kaligian.
And I will, in round two, my picks will be Katya Haraz.
No, we're still in round one.
Round one, excuse me. Round one, Haraz.
Haraz, okay.
And Agarwal.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Uh-huh. Okay.
Tara Kaligian, round two.
Ishan Agarwal, round two.
Okay. Okay.
Yes. It's so, these are just incredible kids. Tara?
What was the last name?
Kaligian.
Thank you.
And I will. Ishan Agarwal.
And I will also support Ishan Agarwal. So we do move on to round three, correct? Or?
Three votes.
Three votes.
Three, yeah.
Shall we make it unanimous?
Would you make it unanimous, would my colleagues consider it to make it unanimous?
Yes. Ishan Agarwal.
Yes.
Okay, so Ishan Agarwal will be appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission's student representative, seat number seven. Next, we have the Cultural Arts Commission, member-at-large seat number two, currently held by Suzanne Carker. She is seeking reappointment.
I guess I'll start, Deborah Van Ness. And I will vote to reappoint Suzanne Carker.
As will I, Suzanne Carker.
Debbie Van Ness.
Suzanne Carker.
Okay, so Deborah Van Ness and Suzanne Carker move on to round one.
And I am first, and I will renominate Suzanne Carker, excuse me, for round one, Carker and Van Ness, Deborah Van Ness.
And I will, I'm gonna stick with Carker.
Debbie Van Ness and Suzanne Carker.
Carker and Van Ness.
Carker and Van Ness.
Okay. It's round two. We gotta, right, we gotta keep going. Carker?
Carker.
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 And Carker. Shall we make it unanimous?
Sounds like, sounds like a law firm.
Yeah.
So Suzanne Carker will be appointed to Culture Arts, reappointed to the Cultural Arts Commission's seat number two.
Yes. Gotta play hard. Hi.
Next, we have the Cultural Arts Commission, member-at-large seat number four, currently held by Karen Tokashiki. She is seeking reappointment.
Ellen Rosenberg.
Karen Tokashiki.
No further nominations.
Oh, it has to, because I was gonna say Rosenberg, but if it's already been done, okay.
What happened?
No, it's fine, it's, it's.
I am making no further nominations.
And I said Rosenberg, but go ahead, you can say.
So you said Rosenberg?
Yeah, but.
Tokashiki.
Okay.
So Ellen Rosenberg and Karen Tokashiki move on to round one.
Right. Okay.
Tokashiki. Only one.
Tokashiki and Rosenberg.
Rosenberg and Tokashiki.
Tokashiki?
Tokashiki and Rosenberg.
Round two.
Yeah, so Tokashiki and Ellen Rosenberg move on to round two.
Rosenberg.
Rosenberg.
Tokashiki?
Rosenberg.
Tokashiki.
Three, two.
Yeah.
Do you wanna make it unanimous, or that's usually what we do? So, do you, or is that, is that okay? Correct. Ellen Rosenberg has three votes, so she already won, if you wanna make it unanimous.
I'll vote to make it unanimous.
Okay.
I'll go along.
I mean, again, this, it's just, it's a tradition, it's a habit that we do.
So Karen Tokashiki will be reappointed to Culture Arts.
No.
No.
Ellen Rosenberg.
Oh. Ellen Rosenberg will be appointed to the Culture Arts Commission's seat number two.
Hi. I'm sorry, this is seat number four. To clarify.
Next, we have the Culture Arts Commission's student representative, seat number six, currently held by Anthony Padnos, who will be termed out, as it is a one-year term.
Okay, Isabella Jacobson.
Lucia Salapov.
What is it? Okay.
Oh, Salapinov, I'm sorry, mispronounced.
Alex Dickey.
Grant Lang.
Oh, there's two spots for you. There's, there's a mistake on our, so you get another one now. And Sadie Kaplan, who's a glassblower.
I'm first.
Yeah.
Lucia Salapinov and Alex Dickey.
Dickey and Lucia.
I'm sorry, what was the second one?
Lucia.
Lucia Salapinov.
And for me, Grant Lang and Isabella Jacobs.
Sun.
Sun, thank you.
Kaplan and Jacobson.
And I'll go with Dickey.
Round two.
And, and, yeah, just only one.
Just one, okay.
Round two, Dickey.
Grant Lang.
So, I'm sorry.
Oh, Dickey Lang does not move forward.
Yes, he only received one vote.
Sadie Kaplan.
I'm sorry.
No?
Sadie only received one vote as well. So it's Alex Dickey, Isabella Jacobson, and Lucia.
Dickey.
Dickey?
Dickey.
And Dickey.
Unanimous.
So Alex Dickey will be appointed to the Culture Arts Commission's student representative, seat number six. Next, we have the Library Commission, member-at-large seat number one, currently held by Stephanie Bond. She is termed out.
Okay, so I'd like to nominate Shutsi Coburn.
Rita Crabtree Compa?
Marge Shutsi Coburn.
Yeah. I didn't know if it was Marge or Mari, okay.
Crabtree Compa.
And Amy Ferris.
So Marge, Rita, and Amy Ferris move on to round one.
Rita Crabtree Compa? And Alyssa Braitman?
No, she didn't, she wasn't nominated in round one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So that. Ferris.
Ferris.
And Shutsi Coburn and Ferris.
Crabtree Compa. Just single vote.
Okay.
Ferris. And Shuts, Shuts Coburn.
And I'll do Coburn Compa. So all three move on to the next round.
Boy. Shutsi Coburn for me.
Crabtree Compa.
Rita.
All right, I will happily support Rita as well.
And Rita.
Crabtree Compa.
Rita.
So that's four for Rita Crabtree, unless you wanna make it unanimous?
Make that five, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Rita Crabtree Compa will be appointed to the Library Commission, seat number one. Next, we have the Library Commission, member-at-large seat number two, currently held by Diane Levitt. She is currently seeking reappointment.
I begin, and I will nominate Diane Levitt, the incumbent.
Diane Levitt.
Alyssa Braitman?
Marge Shutsi Coburn.
Amy Ferris.
And I am going to support Diane Levitt only.
Levitt and Alyssa Braitman? Wait, no, she didn't make it, right?
No, she made it. Everybody goes through, right? Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. So Levitt and Braitman?
Levitt's and Coburn.
Levitt and Ferris.
And Diane Levitt.
Diane Levitt?
Levitt.
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 Let's see. Levitt?
Shall we make it unanimous?
Yeah. Make it unanimous.
So Diane Levitt will be reappointed to Library Commission, seat number two. And finally, we have the Library Commission's student representative, seat number six, currently held by Sidney Huber, who will be termed out, as it is a one-year term.
Kylie Cullen.
Alex Dickey.
No, we, no, didn't we put him on?
We did.
Yeah.
We already put, yeah, he was gonna be my library guy, too.
And I'm sorry, Ishan Agarwal.
Is already.
Is already on.
It's already on.
Yeah, then it's already appointed as well.
Sorry, I'm trying to get caught up.
No, no, it's good.
Zoe Nichols.
Zoe Nichols. Okay, wait a minute. I had one. Stella Pulos.
I'm sorry, that one was what?
The last one. Oh, I'm sorry. Pulos?
Pulos, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, Stella. Let me see. Kylie Cullen?
Peyton Burke?
So Kylie Cullen, Zoe Nichols, Stella Pulos, and Peyton Burke move on to round one.
And I go first, Kylie Cullen. Let's take two one.
Okay. I'll do Cullen and Pulos.
Cullen and Pulos. Pulos. I'll just do Cullen.
Cullen Burke.
Cullen Nichols.
So. Cullen, only Cullen goes through, right?
Correct.
So, I look, I think it was unanimous anyway. Cullen. You know, and, and so Kylie Cullen will be nominated.
Kylie Cullen will be appointed to Library Commission's student representative, seat number six.
So, I wanna congratulate all those who were appointed or reappointed. I also had comments, the students also talked so much about the library and what it meant to them, and how we need more time, more hours, more. It was really, again, really remarkable how much those students loved the library. And they weren't the only ones. Our library is incredibly well-loved. And, you know, the people, the caliber of the people, these are not just our, you know, our friends, and some may be, but some of the people on here, like, there was an actual librarian who had retired, you know, who wanted to, you know. It's incredible, so we have to find a way. We've said this before. Councilmember Lesser?
So, I would propose to my colleagues that we consider adding seats to two commissions that presently have an even number of members, which, if you think about it, is not great for voting purposes. In consultation with the city attorney, I'd like to explain this future agenda item, which I'm told I can propose during this item. Namely, I propose that we would add an additional seat to the Cultural Arts Commission as well as to the Library Commission, which currently have six members based on five adults and one student member. The Parks and Recreation Commission currently has seven members, if I'm correct. My rationale is exactly what the mayor has just said, what we've all been struggling with, with so many interested and capable residents wanting to serve. And the purposes of our commission is to bring our public voices in. And in particular, these commissions have more work for their commissioners to supplement staff in, under the direction of council. So, what I understand would be a two-step process that we can initiate through this item on this agenda, would be for this to come back, and that way, we would have another appointment, I think, as soon as the next regular council meeting. Is that right?
I say yes.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm the authority.
That would be an emotion, if it would be appropriate to do so.
I'd like to speak.
Oh, I'm, would you?
Please.
Okay, sorry, sorry. You know it's covered, mine's covered, I'm so sorry.
I appreciate Mayor Proton bringing that up now. It was an item that I, not specifically what he's requesting, it'd be a friendly amendment. And in the same breath, that we had a lot of adults interested, but some extraordinary students in town that, you know, we had 29, 30 students for three spots. Although maybe the commission's getting larger, if the friendly amendment would be to go to a two-student option, I don't see what that hurts. If anything, it enhances the opportunity for these kids to grow and be engaged with the community. So that was gonna be my two-step process, coming back. But if I can piggyback on the friendly. So that was going to be my two-step process, coming back, but if I can piggyback on the friendly amendment.
I want to make sure others don't know how to speak first, and I have a response.
Do we get, yeah, my only concern, and I do want to add more students. My only concern would be then we're, are we back at even again?
Well, and also, we have to be careful because we are limited by our DIA space. We can have no more than seven because of the microphones and screens. And so we do have to be careful of that. So any, I see Councilmember Franklin, thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, Mayor Protem Lesser, it was the cultural arts and which other?
I believe it's cultural arts and the Library Commission, which currently have six.
That's correct.
So that would bring it to seven. And then cultural arts, will that bring it to seven?
Yes.
Library and cultural.
And so in that case, it would be hard, we couldn't add, maybe, so maybe we can bifurcate it because maybe there's a way in the future to have staff, don't look, staff, don't listen, some other commission or something. I mean, we have, I would love to find a way to involve the students. Yes, Councilmember.
Could we, could we pick an alternate, like have the main student and then have an alternate? Because they don't always, their schedules are always sometimes conflicting, so.
So, can I, can I jump in?
Yes, please.
I want to make sure colleagues can speak first.
Thank you.
My understanding is students only serve for eight months. They have the summer off, so their term is shortened. Is that correct?
No.
No?
I'm sorry, that's, we recently amended the handbook to change that because we were giving them the three months off plus the additional four. So they were missing a lot of meetings.
Right, so I was going to make that observation. And second, I do share the concern of bringing this back to even. But very much am I in support of exploring some other commission opportunity for these really capable students in our community, whether it's through an alternate position or it's through another commission. Staff, hold your ears, as the mayor said, but I would love to see some way that we can engage them.
But to, to what, I think, I'm sorry, the issue, though, I think, right now is if we wanted to move on some of these people, with some of these people who've applied now, which is what you're trying to accomplish with your motion, separate and apart from, you know. So I would say that we could do, but then we would have two more appointees that we could do.
Correct.
This year.
That's, I was going, part, part one of my question or comment was, I was, that's where I was going. I was hoping if we're doing this two-step process that we can get them on this term.
Yeah.
That was one. And the second is the alternate, the alternate student would not change the numbers or they just would be an alternate, and it still allows them to have a toe in the water and just be part of a commission. And they could kind of tag-team it and go and come as they, they need because students do get busy. But that, again, it's just an alternate.
Logistical question, and that is, how would they communicate to know who was going to be coming and who's not going to be coming? How would the alternate work in a commission context? That's the one question I have.
Is, can I jump in there?
Yeah, just have a dialogue.
We're, we're an alternate for each other on different committees. And so I'm, I think we, it would work the same way, where the main person gets the first choice. And if they can't make it, they contact their alternate to fill in for them.
And is, oh, sorry.
Well, I want to be sure if that's allowed. There, there, I want to look to our, our city clerk because to make sure that that's kind of kosher, if you will. Because it might be different in an appointed situation. I'm all for that, but is that fine?
I was actually just looking at Parks and Recreation Director Mark Lehman, since it's his two commissions.
Okay, so, and you were looking at him to, to say?
To marvel at his wonders.
Love your time.
To encourage him to come down and be in the spotlight?
So do you want to come down and speak to it? We're trying, we're trying to, to bring in some people here. Sorry, everybody, I just couldn't help it. I mean, hello, Director Lehman.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. So yes, I think, answer the question, the alternate would work. You know, one other concept could be as ad hoc committees are developed and they're researching various work plan items, a community member could be a part of that, you know, kind of like a pseudo-alternate as another option.
Okay, that's great.
And I think some of the, you know, students said that they read the minutes. So let's keep them engaged and alternate could read the minutes and.
So, go ahead, so rephrase them.
So I'll amend my motion that at the next council meeting, we would be able to entertain the addition of new adult commission slots on the cultural arts and library commissions, one adult apiece, as well as add an alternate student position, as well as select those that would fill those seats, if that's the will of the council to move forward.
And so this needs a code amendment.
Correct.
So typically, you could have first and second reading, but based on, you can, you could adopt an urgency ordinance at the next meeting. If there's four votes to adopt that, so that you can have some continuity, you know, with the membership. Heck, start them as soon as possible. So we could, we'll come back with two resolu, uh, two ordinances, if that's the direction, a regular ordinance and an urgency ordinance to increase those two commissions. With respect to the student representative, I think, was that done by resolution?
Yes, membership, ordinance, and reso.
Okay, so we'll have to come back with two ordinances and probably two different resolutions.
Correct.
Okay.
So it's going to be kosher. I love this idea. It's been moved and seconded. And to, to clarify, we are not opening up applications again. It's just with these people. So everybody, keep your binder and go think very thoughtfully about, you know, what is before us. So, so this motion is the urgency ordinance or?
A motion, that's the direction. We'll come back and so the public will have their opportunity at the next meeting.
Okay, so no motion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We got the direction we need.
Okay, I really appreciate, again, thank you to all who applied. Congratulations to all who were appointed. And thank you to my colleagues for making a path for more to be engaged. I would very much appreciate a five-minute or seven-minute bio break. Oh, I shouldn't say that. So we're going to take a quick break.
We're just tripping all in here. They were very excited. You know what? Soccer is a beautiful game. I'm just jealous of them.
Peggy says, can we go live?
We're live. We're live. All right. Thank you to my colleagues for the excellent work so far. Let's not slow down now because the most important thing that we do. Richard Montgomery, where are you?
Sorry, he's not even come down for this.
Yeah. I have words for him. We will, we're about to be presented with the fiscal year 2026 proposed operating budget by our Acting Finance Director Libby Brethauer. And just for those who are watching at home, Richard, we will not be making a decision tonight on this budget, but we will be learning about it for the first time or, you know, asking our questions. Then we're going to have a study session next Tuesday. And I encourage the public to come to that as well. So with that, good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. I am Libby Brethauer, Acting Finance Director, and I'm glad to have the opportunity to present the fiscal year 26 proposed budget tonight. So the document's 432 pages this year, but we'll do our best to break it down and provide important highlights. We do hope residents and community members continue to engage with us over the next few weeks as we work through our way to adopting the budget in June. So tonight's, oh, tonight's presentation will include updates on the recent budget survey and current fiscal outlook, plus an overview of revenue and expenditure trends. We'll mostly focus on the general fund. The budget study session on May 13th will drill down into each department's operations and staffing, as well as changes built into next year's budget. At the end of tonight's presentation, we would like to take any questions, comments, and feedback for additional information that you would like to learn more about during the May 13th budget study session. So just a quick overview of our budget process timeline. We kick things off internally in December and January, when staff begins preparing the mid-year budget update that was presented to you on February 18th. We also kicked off a community budget survey this year that closed on March 31st, and I'll be sharing results from that in just a moment. Staff in all departments worked together to develop the proposed budget that is before you tonight. Due to various funding constraints this year, departments had to make some tough decisions, and we thank them for their diligent efforts and collaboration. After tonight, we have a budget study session scheduled for next week, and we will have items for the budget and CIP on May 20th as well during the regular city council meeting for any follow-up items. If needed, we can also have a subsequent study session on May 27th. But if all goes according to plan, we'll be back on June 3rd to adopt the budget before the new fiscal year starts on July 1st. So our budget survey this year was, we have to say, the most successful ever with 678 responses. Our team did additional in-person outreach at the farmer's market. We had enhanced signage throughout the city, and as well as attendance at in-person meetings to meet people where they already are instead of begging them to come to our meetings. And I have to say, by doing this, we were able to make personal contact with more people, and I think the results speak for themselves. So the key takeaways from the results are that respondents deeply value their community's character and safety with strong preferences for public safety, infrastructure, and development that is community-centered and preserves our small-town feel. So when asked about spending priorities for city operations, the light blue bars indicate that most respondents agree with the amount of money that's currently dedicated to each category. The dark blue bars indicate a desire to spend more money, with city maintenance, parks, and public safety getting the most responses there. Per usual, city administration leads in the desire to reduce funding. We're used to that. However, there's only so much that can be reduced from support departments such as IT, finance, and HR. That said, we're always looking for ways to find efficiencies in our operations and staffing. So when asked about the top five priorities, respondents, number one was, you know, far exceeding anything else, was keeping our cities safe. The second and third priorities are fixing roads in orange and making parks better in yellow. When asked about the top places to fix in Manhattan Beach, respondents gave parking facilities and parks and rec facilities as the top responses. So moving on to our fiscal outlook. A city budget is a spending plan, and first and foremost must reflect community priorities. So results of our survey confirm our budget aligns with community priorities of public safety and emergency services, which totals 56% of our funding, the general fund. Or, sorry, the general fund's spending. The fiscal year 26 budget also includes funding to maintain essential services at desired service levels. So as a service and organization, how do we provide services? It's our people. As, you know, it is critical that we have the right people and the right roles with the proper training and technology, as well as the leadership to steer everyone forward. So this is how we maintain outstanding essential services here in Manhattan Beach, and this budget supports our service-oriented employees with placeholder MOU salary adjustments included. This proposed budget also prioritizes maintenance and infrastructure in line with the survey results. Our revenues are stable in key areas, including property taxes, which is our largest general fund revenue source. We're fortunate that voters approved Measure MMB last November to generate an additional $5.9 million for the general fund, which is contributing to our general fund surplus of $6.6 million. The city has maintained our AAA credit ratings with S&amp;P and Moody's, and overall, our financial position allows us to invest in our infrastructure, maintenance, and service levels. So that said, we still have our challenges. This has been probably the most challenging budget year since the pandemic because we have a lot of competing interests. We experienced a nice rebound in revenues after the pandemic, but that revenue growth is, has certainly slowed down. We're also hearing a lot in the news about other cities such as the city of LA, and certainly, everyone has their challenges, but we're not doing as poorly here in Manhattan Beach. When I was before you, in February, with our mid-year update, we discussed the slowdown in sales tax projections. However, since then, our sales tax consultant has revised that back up a little. I'm happy to say that. And I'm sharing this now in the presentation just to say that economic factors and projections are changing quickly, as you know. And that said, there's a level of uncertainty coming out of Washington that seems unprecedented in a way because it seems to be a little self-inflicted, too. The tariff whiplash is making for a wild ride for all of us, and our best option is to stick with what we know and our past practices of conservative revenue and expenditure projections and planning for the future. So two other challenges that we're facing, as I'm sure other cities are struggling with this, too, are rising CalPERS unfunded liability costs, as well as insurance costs related to premiums, claims, and litigation. The fiscal year 26 proposed budget is able to accommodate immediate needs. However, costs in both of these areas are rising faster than historical trends have indicated. So we do plan on coming back to City Council with more information and options to address these issues as needed. I like to say that with great challenges also comes great opportunities. Budgeting is a balancing act, and this year, we had to be ballerinas. With staff took the opportunity to proactively reprioritize expenditure line items that we no longer needed to make way for higher priorities. We're grateful for departments for taking an honest look at their line items and making these adjustments. City Council also approved cost recovery measures on April 15th for user fees, as well as increases to parking citations, parking permits, and parking meter revenues. With Measure MMB funds supporting higher general fund surpluses, we're able to transfer more to the CIP fund for infrastructure and maintenance. With more funding supporting these capital projects, then we're also able to transfer more to the Section 115 Pension Trust Fund. So we took the opportunity to make these policy changes this year, but there's always more to look at and consider, and we will likely revisit these policies in the future again just to make sure we're keeping up with best practices. And of course, the Manhattan Beach community is now poised to consider some of our biggest investment and development opportunities at Lot 3 and 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard. I don't think we've seen, we've seen these opportunities certainly downtown since the Metlocks project over 20 years ago. So we hope everyone listening does join us on May 21st at the community meeting at 6:00 PM at Manhattan Heights, because we do want to hear your feedback and find out the community's vision for these opportunity sites. All right, so we're finally getting to some budget highlights here. So again, the fiscal year 26 budget includes placeholder increases for employee MOUs that are currently being negotiated, as well as CPI increases for known contract increases, materials, and supplies. Since we prioritize building in these known cost increases, there were some requests submitted by departments this year that had to be either deferred or modified down. So the budget does include some necessary technology enhancements to ensure continuity and security in our operations. And finally, the budget also includes year one of our proposed five-year capital improvement plan, which will all be presented on May 13th. So regarding authorized full-time positions, the fiscal year 26 budget does not include any new positions. The budget does include the one position that was approved during our mid-year update in February, as well as some proposed upgrades and downgrades to existing full-time positions. And departments will provide more details on these during the study session next week on the 13th. So speaking of our study session on the 13th, each department will also provide some context to their operations by presenting performance measures and highlighting notable workload indicators and activities that have been accomplished in the prior calendar year. So each department looks forward to sharing their story and answering any questions on the 13th. Okay, finally, getting into some real numbers here. Zooming out to the citywide level, revenues do exceed expenditures in fiscal year 26. The citywide budget includes operating expenditures of $151 million, as well as capital projects and equipment of almost $32 million, and debt service just under $11 million. And we also did include a placeholder for debt service on 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard that we're currently working on. So the general fund surplus this year is $19.8 million. And as your acting director, I wish I could just, in the presentation here, and call it a night. Seriously, though, I'll keep repeating this as much as I can this year, that the $19 million number does include one-time bond proceeds for the Manhattan, 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard that we will use to replenish the general fund balance for that purchase price of $13 million. So once we exclude that, that leaves us a revised general fund surplus of approximately $6.6 million. And of this amount, $5.9 million can be attributed to the new revenue from Measure MMB, which voters approved this, last year, hoping for infrastructure improvements. So at the end of fiscal year 26, our general fund reserves are projected to include a financial policy, $21.1 million, which is 20% of general fund expenditures, as well as maintaining our economic uncertainty reserve of $4 million. And then that leaves the unreserved general fund balance estimated at $5.1 million. The unreserved general fund balance is impacted by transfers out to other funds, including $5 million allocated to the CIP fund, $500,000 allocated to the storm drain fund, and about $285,000 to the street lighting and landscape fund. We're also scheduling a transfer to the Section 115 Pension Trust Fund of about $3.2 million. So funds held within the Section 115 Pension Trust Fund can only be used to pay for pension costs directly to CalPERS or reimburse ourselves for pension costs that we pay to CalPERS. But having the funds set aside here secures the use for pension costs only. So citywide revenues. Our largest fund is obviously the general fund, and then we also have enterprise funds for water, sewer, storm drain, and parking. The special revenue funds include governmental funds such as gas tax, Prop A, Prop C, Measure R, Measure M, Measure W, and all of these go to fund capital projects. Then we also have our internal service funds, including the insurance reserve fund, IT fund, fleet, and building maintenance. And then the small slice there is the trust and agency funds for utility undergrounding districts, as well as the Section 115 trust fund. So citywide expenditures are weighted towards public works, which oversees significant capital projects. The next largest departments are public safety, followed by human resources due to the insurance fund, and then parks and recreation, community development, and administrative support departments like finance and IT and management services. Drilling down to the general fund, revenues total $125 million. And again, that does include that $13.2 million in one-time bond proceeds. The largest sources of funds are our tax revenues, such as property tax, sales tax, transient occupancy tax, and business license taxes. So we'll go into a few highlights here on each of these key revenues. Property tax remains the largest component of the general fund at 37.5% of the total, and it's expected to increase by about 5% from the current year estimate. The city's housing market continues to remain strong with high demand on residential properties and new construction projects contributing to increased assessed valuations. Property tax is estimated based on historical data, local economic trends, and expert analysis from our consultants at HDL. Sales tax, the chart here does not include the new Measure MMB funds anticipated to bring in $5.9 million next year. So this, this is the city's second-largest general fund revenue source, and it's expected to increase from the current year estimate by about 1.7%. So the business categories that typically perform well in Manhattan Beach include general consumer goods and restaurants and hotels. In the bottom-left corner is transient occupancy tax, and this does include both hotels and short-term rentals. So we are expecting this revenue to increase by about $400,000 over the next year. And this budget does assume occupancy rates will remain steady over the coming months for both hotels and short-term rentals. And hopefully, we'll even see a boost from regional events like the World Cup coming to LA in the summer of '26. In the bottom-right corner is business license tax. The city issues approximately $5,000, or $5,000 business licenses annually, and revenue from this tax is primarily, it's based primarily on the type of business and gross receipts reported. This tax has been resilient in economic downturns and has remained consistent over the past few years. With our new online portal, businesses are able to apply for new licenses, renew their licenses, pay online, and receive their tax certificate via email. This implementation has resulted in significant efficiencies in the way we manage the program, and I've only heard positive feedback from businesses so far. Always welcome to hear more feedback, though. We're also starting to implement a new audit and discovery program to ensure that all businesses within the city are licensed and paying their appropriate tax. So we expect business license tax to come in slightly higher, 6.3% higher next year because of these additional program areas. So building permanent plant check fees were adjusted per the user fee study that was just adopted at the last meeting. Updated cost recovery fees will go into effect on July 1st and result in an increase of roughly $450,000 compared to the current year-end estimates. And parks and recreation revenues are expected to increase overall by about $200,000 or 4% based on the continued demand for all of our parks and recreation programs, classes, facility reservations, and et cetera. General fund expenditures are totaling $105 million in fiscal year 26. So salaries and benefits make up the largest portion of the general fund expenditures at approximately 60%. This includes salaries and benefits, including current service pension costs, medical costs, Medicare, et cetera. Materials and services makes up about 20% of the budget, which includes contract professional services, legal services, department supplies, utilities, et cetera. Internal service charges total $15.3 million, and these allocations are then, you know, these are charges to the and these allocations are then, you know, these are charges to the general fund that then are revenues to the internal service funds that go to pay for those costs there. And then we also have debt service payments that include the pension obligation bonds, as well as Marine Avenue Park debt service that is budgeted in the general fund. So looking at the same $105 million, but by department, you can see that 56% of our general fund budget is dedicated to public safety. These expenditures support critical police patrol investigations, traffic safety programs. And in the fire department, thus includes fire operations, emergency medical services, community risk reduction, and emergency preparedness efforts. Parks and Recreation and Community Development Departments are greatly supported by cost recovery fees and service charges. We always like to remind about that. And again, these department program areas will be fully presented during the May 13th budget study session. Salaries and benefits are increasing by about $4.4 million or 7.5% overall. The budget does include salary adjustments and the associated benefits. We also budget for what we call a vacancy factor to recognize savings from unfilled positions upfront. This practice began long ago, and the number of filled and unfilled positions is monitored throughout the year to make sure that we don't exceed this. So this year, it's at 6%. So as mentioned earlier, this budget includes no new full-time positions, but we did include recommended adjustments to some existing positions, which total about $134,000 in full-time position changes and about $111,000 for part-time position additions. So again, we'll talk more about these next week. And at the bottom of the slide, it mentions medical and CalPERS service costs increasing as well by about $1 million in total there. So materials and services are increasing by about $560,000 due to inflationary and CPI increases. Across the board, just like, you know, costs are increasing for everyone at home. Costs are increasing across the board for everything we do here at the city. So we are making efforts to budget for that appropriately going forward. This category also includes some of the budget enhancements listed on the slide that, again, we'll talk more about next week. One thing we wanted to note, the last bullet point, there's no good place to point it out, so we threw it in here. But we did move some existing line items from contract services to new account numbers titled leased property and equipment to help us track these items for accounting purposes. This was a topic during our ACFOR presentation, this GASB 87 lease tracking that we have to do for accounting purposes. So help us do that. We made this budgetary change, but we just wanted to point that out, that that is not like a new million dollars that you see, so there's reduction in other areas that make up for it. So internal service fund chargeouts, again, on the slice of the pie was $15.3 million. But some funds are increasing significantly in some areas. So notably, our IT fund for critical projects, and then our insurance reserve fund. So here, I'll just, I'll highlight the insurance reserve fund here since it is the most significant, but it is probably best to defer any major discussion to next week if you'd like. So we have been budgeting the chargeouts based on historical averages. However, the last few years, costs just seem to keep going up and up. Our insurance premiums are going up $1.2 million due to various causes, including the extreme weather events, fires, and cybersecurity attacks. Additionally, our claims paid and litigation expenses are also rising. So, you know, and again, we were budgeting based on historical trends, and we used to see good years and bad years that would kind of level out, so the averages would, you know, would be smoothed out. However, the costs are just going up every year over the last few years. So staff is currently reviewing an updated actuarial report and conducting an internal assessment of funding needs, and will return to City Council at a later date as needed. So this chart shows the current projected fund balances and so for fiscal '26, as well as future years. So the financial policy reserve is in the dark orange there. Again, that's 20% of adopted budget operating expenditures. The economic uncertainty reserve is in yellow, and the unreserved fund balance is in green. So the five-year forecast is a planning tool, and it is dynamic in that we updated, update our assumptions and growth factors as new information becomes available. This also makes it evident that in future years, we do need to continue our efforts to hold the line on costs and continue to look at potential revenue enhancements. So the last few slides, we'll talk about some policy and budget decisions. And again, we're finance people, but we attempted to put this in a visual chart for everyone. So we did our best. So this chart depicts what we did discuss with the Finance Subcommittee and then incorporated into the proposed budget. So previously, the CIP Fund received funding from both parking citations and parking meter revenues. These allocations resulted in staff time to ensure that funds were distributed correctly. And so just as an example, a monthly journal entry was, you know, done every month to split up the parking meter revenues. So I always love to simplify where we can, and so we took the opportunity to keep all parking citation revenues in the general fund, and then all parking meter revenues in the parking fund. And as you know, with the Lot 3 replacement happening, the parking fund definitely needs its funding as well. So we were able to do this and still fund capital projects with a transfer from the general fund surplus to the CIP Fund to make up for that loss in revenue in the CIP Fund. So Public Works will be reviewing projects included in the capital improvement plan next week. And then the balance of these fund transfers will sit in a reserve for future projects, including debt service in the CIP Fund for future projects and debt service. So in addition to the current service costs and pension obligation bond debt service payments, the city again has unfunded liabilities due to CalPERS investment returns falling below the assumed rate of 6.8% in fiscal years '22 and '23. The proposed budget does include $2 million in unfunded accrued liability payments allocated out to departmental programs based on current service levels. So the budget includes $1.8 million budgeted for the general fund portion in the Section 115 Trust Fund. And then the remaining $154,000 is allocated out to the enterprise and internal service funds. So the pension obligation bonds that were issued in 2021 were not meant to solve our pension funding issues forever. However, it did buy us some time and flexibility. The pension policy adopted with the pension obligation bonds allows flexibility in how we allocate the savings that was derived from issuing the bonds. And over the last four years, we've allocated $5.3 million to the CIP Fund and $3.4 million to the Section 115 Pension Trust Fund. So it's tempting to continue using the funds for capital projects, but it is imperative we dedicate these funds to the Section 115 trust going forward. Now, if CalPERS starts outpacing their assumed rates of return every year, then that means our unfunded liabilities could go down, and these funds would still remain in the trust fund and would only be able to be used for future pension costs in the future. So that was a lot of information from our finance brains to yours, but this does conclude my presentation. And just to recap, we have stable diverse revenues and a balanced general fund budget with a surplus of $6.6 million thanks to Measure MMB funds. The budget does include investments in our outstanding service levels as well as infrastructure and maintenance. So I welcome your feedback and questions to help us prepare for next week's budget study session. We would also like to take questions and comments sent to the email address on the screen at budget@manhattanbeach.gov. And we do hope to see residents and community members, including former councilmember Richard Montgomery, at the upcoming budget meetings. Thank you.
I'll never tire of that joke. All right, thank you for that rapid, high-level overview. But I'm sure, let me switch to my, and I know that you guys have really worked really hard. It's been, like I said, at the state of the city, instead of March Madness with basketball, it's been January, February, March, April, May madness for finance. So really appreciate your department. So are there questions, staff, right now? Let's remember, and I know you all know this, we will be really rolling up our sleeves next Tuesday. But if there's questions now that may help them, go for it. Okay. Councilmember Shirley, were you pressing?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Looks all too familiar, but well done in delivering it. Yeah, you know, just for full transparency, I'd spoken both with Taleen and Libby this week, so had some really good dialogue, answered a lot of my questions. But for the, you know, full transparency, since the public wasn't in on those conversations, a couple of things that concerns me in the sense of coming back and diving into this. I know the next, the study session, we're going to be focused on the CIP. And the departments are going to go and tell us their specific budgets and narratives and performance measures and whatnot. But, you know, I wanted to throw these things out now, and you kind of navigate where these things fall in the study session during the month of May. But, you know, the survey, you know, you got a lot of responses from the survey. I guess I would want to know what enhancements specifically talked to the desires of the community that had input on what they wanted, like for public safety and Parks and Rec. It'd be nice to kind of outline those and memorialize those. We've enhanced these, we've heard your voice, and we're enhancing these, and this is kind of what we're going to do and what the milestones are, how fast we're going to get those things done, whether it's parks or public safety. You know, I heard about keeping the public safe, and parking was important. So some of those things are low-hanging fruit. You can probably pick those off. But it'd be just nice to know that you had a lot of respondents, and they spoke, and where those are going to impact in the budget for next year. I also want to, you know, just make sure that we understand the net surplus is about $700,000. I know the $6.6 million includes the $5.9 million estimated sales tax MMB increase. Is that correct?
Yes.
So the net is about, if you didn't have the MMB, you'd be here with a seven, about a $700,000, give or take.
Six hundred and something.
Six hundred. That's a, see, that's finance. Thank you for that. But just, you know, again, just to focus on, that's what we're looking at. I also have some concern with the city's, the amount of city debt. I just want to make sure as we go out for more debt service that, you know, maybe you bring back to us some information about what our debt levels are. Because our pension obligation bonds, when we, when we did that four years ago, we removed that from liability and put it into debt. So that's 90 million debt there, as well as our other debt. And we just purchased a property, too. So it'd be nice to know how much debt we have, if we're in any kind of concern for our AAA rating or going forward to get those, get that AAA reaffirmed. I am really concerned in the sense of being sensitive because we are going to go reaffirm that AAA rating, that we make sure that our ducks are in a row, that everything is sound. Because that, that's a game changer as far as the AAA rating goes. So the debt level is important. I know we talked a little bit about the vacancy factor. I was hoping to see that ratcheted down, even though it was ratcheted down from 7% last year to 6% this year.
Can I, I want to make a comment. Before we talk about, I mean, you've asked a lot of questions, which is great. Let's remember that we want to hear from the public. We don't give a lot, this is the time for questions. So, you know, when, if, this is just my, my belief in how we should do this piece of it. So when we say, you know, I think that I would prefer to see this or that, this is the time to ask the questions, right? And then...
I mean, I could phrase it in a form of a question, like, can we see, you know, if our debt service is...
No, that was, I understood that question. That made a lot of sense, but when you're talking about like vacancy factor, you know what I mean? I'm saying it...
No, I hear you. So I guess if you want to go to the public and then I can ask these questions...
That's how we do that.
Right.
Because we're not supposed to signal to the public yet how we feel about this until we hear from them. It's just, it's just Robert, it's just how we...
Okay, so this is just comments?
No, it's just questions. It's questions, not comments about how we, it's really, I'm sorry I interrupted you. It's just how we, it's how you do it. It's how you ask questions to staff in the staff report, and then public comes back, and then we can say, okay, I, you know...
I get it. To attach to the staff report is a 436-page document that I'm asking questions.
Yeah, if it's questions, just go give...
I can pause, and you can continue.
No, I just want to make sure it's not, you're not giving opinion now.
I don't think I'm giving opinions. I'm asking for...
Okay.
I'm asking for data for the next meeting, so we can discuss it.
For me, I, I'm so sorry. I think I'm miscommunicating. I just want to be sure you're asking for that and not saying I'm really, I'm concerned or I don't, you know what I mean? Like, I heard too much like commentary there, so I just want the questions. But I apologize because I think I'm misunderstanding and miscommunicating, so...
I'm going to pause and let, to see if there's anybody else that wants to speak, and I may revisit speaking.
But, I mean, I didn't see any other colleague. Did any other colleague want to ask questions now of staff?
Not at this point.
Yeah.
Just to move this forward, I welcome, if there are specific questions of staff, great. If not, maybe we open a pro bono comment, and then very much, I'm taking notes. I'm listening to what comments you're making, councilmember.
I, please, don't misunderstand. I was, I just wanted to be sure we were going to open it up, and then, so, okay.
It's more of a procedural.
It's more procedural. It was just simply procedural. I'm that way. Okay. So what if, do you have more questions before the public?
No.
Okay. Not that there's a ton of public here, but that's just, again, open it up to public comments. Or go for it.
Yes, so, where'd she go?
Sorry.
So on Slide 20, on page 528, the transient occupancy tax. What accounts for that, what accounts for that increase from fiscal year 2023 to fiscal year 2024? I'm trying to remember.
That's our short-term rentals.
Yes.
Okay, but didn't we have them before, or was this...
Good question.
Well, we didn't have, we weren't collecting officially.
Yes.
That's it. Sorry, ma'am.
So our short-term, short-term rentals now contributed over $1 million to transient occupancy tax. I want to say it's 1.3.
Yes, I remember that 1 point, you know, I remember when it was $800,000, then it grew to a million. But, but this difference is almost $2 million between 2023 and 2024.
Yes, I think part of that was just rebounding from the pandemic and people traveling again, tourism. All of our, you know, hotels came back nicely.
Okay.
And more and more, more and more short-term rentals have been, short-term rental permits have been issued within that timeframe.
Right.
I'm sorry, I should also mention the increase in the TOT rate went up, too, from 12% to 14%, so that's the other key factor there.
Well, but that happened earlier, though, right? Didn't it happen much earlier?
Well, the council kind of imposed it in phases. So I believe it went from, went up to 14% in July of 23, I think.
July 23, really?
I can, rather than misspeak in the meeting, I can definitely confirm this.
Okay, I thought it was earlier than that. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Questions from...
I guess I have one about rising insurance costs. And I'm just trying to remember, I recognize we're talking about an anticipated reserve, but in the past, we had different pools the city was part of. And I'm just wondering, I'm well aware of rising premiums, it's rising claims, something that I'm still dealing with in my business. Everyone's experiencing it. But I'm just wondering to what extent there are potential pools, if we can give some direction to explore cost savings because other municipalities are facing the same challenges.
Yes, and so that's something we're looking at. I'm not sure if we're prepared to speak on it tonight, but we were hoping to better address this next week, if that's okay.
That's fine. Thank you.
Great. Other questions right now before I turn over to the public? Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Franklin.
And just one other one that I realized I had here. On Slide 25... On slide 25, we talk about enhancement to legal services, $90,000. So what were those?
Prosecutor. Prosecutor.
Oh, yeah.
I believe the city prosecutor is in part...
City prosecution services, and then also additional legal services in the Human Resources Department for various labor-related issues. But happy to give more detail on that next week.
So if it's prosecution services that probably led to fines being levied and then collected, was there offset of revenue for that?
Not one that we built into the budget as new, new offsetting revenue, but...
Okay. And then, and this, I just was curious, the cardiac monitors, is that fire department?
That is, and those are replacement cardiac monitors, I believe.
Okay.
Is that like a routine?
I think so, yeah, replacement schedule, and I think that's only two, so they're quite expensive.
Wow. That's only two, 90,000, wow.
Well, you know, we all have big hearts here.
There you go. You don't miss a beat.
No. I see you get a truce out of it.
Oh, God.
This is the budget discussion, can't be fun.
Okay, thank you.
Back to broadcast, so I can see, okay?
And we did confirm our recollection, the TOT rate did increase from 12% to 14% in July of 2023.
Oh, it was 23, okay. Yeah, because I remember it was, but when was the election of it? When was it on the election?
2019, I believe.
Yeah, 2019, so...
And then I think we kind of deferred the implementation of the first increase because of the pandemic, and then we went from 12% to 14% in 2023.
Was it established in the ballot that it was going to go up at a specified time or only by vote of council?
I believe it was at the discretion of the council as to when we could implement a higher rate, but voters approved up to 14% at the time of the ballot.
And, and you may not know this, but how is that generally in the area? I remember at that time, we compared ourselves to the LAX corridor and things like that.
Yeah, we would have to redo a survey of our like cities, so we could certainly bring that back if you'd like.
Okay, great, thank you.
Recently. Councilor Ternay.
I just have, and I know this is an anticipation question, but are we seeing any cost increases on supplies right now because of the tariffs? And are we anticipating kind of how we're going to deal with, you know, the rising costs?
Well, we've definitely built in, just assumed increases in everything. So interestingly, something came up today where we're having an issue with our supply of water at City Hall. You saw the email where our source for that is having trouble. So it's just, I feel like we're going to start seeing interesting issues like this pop up in various areas, just like every other business and, you know. So it will be interesting to see how it plays out, but just this level of uncertainty, I think, is not something we've seen before.
Thank you.
I guess it, I want to be careful not to make a comment and save this, but I think the overall challenge that all of us are having, I think, is the uncertainty. You described it, you amplified it in your presentation, but the question is, to what extent should we be prepared to adopt a much less robust budget with the uncertainty that we can anticipate on the horizon? And I hope, I believe this is more of a rhetorical question, which we'll be talking about in more detail at our study session, but that's the concern I think all of us are feeling.
Yeah, and I, I too share that concern very much, so thank you for asking. I, you know, you'll continue to see a lot of us at meetings. We will, you know, we're adopting the budget this year in June, and then we'll be back with a quarterly budget update in probably October. Then we have our mid-year budget updates, and then in between city council meetings, you know, we'll have discussions at our finance subcommittee to keep everyone updated on issues as, as they arise. So I think it's just something, we will just continue the communication, continue transparency on all of these items, and just, you know, kind of deal with things as they come up.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
No, thank you.
All right. Open it up to the public, if anybody here would like to make comments.
Stephon Kappa here, good evening, honorable mayor and councilmembers. Hats off to that presentation, Libby. You know, I'm, I'm trying to learn more about this and understand it, and I hope our community can learn more about it as well, so they can participate a bit more than what we have tonight. For, for the presentation next week, we, Libby mentioned revenue enhancements. I would love to hear what some ideas would be for revenue enhancements. I would think that we've exhausted those, you know, already, but if not, I'd love to know what those are, and I think those would be good to pursue and understanding of. One of the things that I've always been interested in over the last couple of years is how we manage our capital projects. The one thing I have not seen on the projects, on the statuses, has been what was the original budget, where are we today, and how's that changed? What, what I've seen is just approve of a new budget, and I've never really seen what was the original budget and is it being increased? And that, and that's something I want to be sensitive to and, you know, have accountability for. I think our, our teams are doing an excellent job, but let's get that visible and at least understand it. I, I just have not seen that. And Mayor Protem Lesser on the, on the reserve or the contingency, I think that's a fantastic comment. I think we need to be very careful about that, and if we've got to kind of increase the reserve and kind of hold down our budget in some of the areas, I encourage us to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephon. I don't think there is another member of the public here.
Any city staff members like to go?
How about on Zoom, Martha?
We have Jim Burton.
Okay, hi, Jim.
My hats off to Stephon for sticking it out in the room there. Honorable mayor, members, members of council, appreciate it. I've got a couple of comments and then maybe some questions, I won't take up too much time. Number one, I appreciated Director Sherrillian's questions and comments. I mean, it is 400 and something pages worth of budget, and then honestly, he's asking the questions that the public wants to ask. I just don't know enough to ask the questions. And I hear the presentation, a wonderful job by our finance department, putting it all together, but as is their role, they're presenting a budget with, you know, somewhat rosy, rose-colored lenses a little bit, this is how great it's going to be. I thought councilmember, Mayor Protem Lesser, and then against Stephon, Mr. Kappa, the cautious approach, the contingency, I think we are entering a period of uncertainty and having what, what if it's not as rosy as it's being presented? Where are we? So those are my comments and then questions. As part of, I think we had 19, almost 20 million dollars of surplus, there was a 13.2 million dollar hit because of the US bank or the property there, and then 6 million something, 5 million was allocated, we end up with 600,000. I've got a question on the three-point, or 13.2 million for the bank, and I know that at one point, I just said, let's just pay it by cash, but I don't think that's wise. I think councilmember Lesser, you had brought up the fact that putting some, some double-tax-free bonds or something, I'm not sure exactly, but what is the way we're going to pay that 13.2 million back? That's one. And then, and then the other thing tonight, absolute tragic situation with what happened on Sepulveda over the weekend, and this council, we've got some urgency ordinances to, to put in some staff members for some new commissions. Is there something in this budget process that can be done to study that Sepulveda corridor, give these parents something else, but is this the time to do it? And is there some way that you can introduce something tonight regarding the budget? I see that I'm out of time, but anyway, I'll conclude, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton.
We have Jill Lampkin.
Okay.
Good evening, council, Jill Lampkin, Downtown Manhattan Business and Professional Association. Just wanted to echo kind of the last, the last two comments, which is, and I'm going to refer to Richard Montgomery in this, the same vein, in that we, you know, here we are with kind of the same last three participants in the room talking. And I kept saying this to, to Richard, I think that if the public isn't getting involved, we need to do something different with these meetings to get the public involved. And perhaps having a two-hour discussion late in the evening isn't necessarily the best way to make this happen. And like, again, Libby, excellent job, but this isn't broken down for the layperson. And if anybody else was sitting there listening in the beginning, they, they left a long time ago, because it's kind of above everybody's understanding. And I, I would really like to encourage all of the businesses and the residents and everybody to be a part of this process, but when the process looks like this, it's, it's not really lending itself to public input. So I just want to throw that out there and say, hey, I'm willing to work with anybody to create some sort of more casual, you know, type environment where there can be more discussion with people instead of just a presentation, because I think that would be much more useful. Just my two cents, wanted to throw it in. Thanks for all the hard work, though, it's a huge project every year, appreciate it.
Thanks, Jill.
There's no additional requests on Zoom.
Okay, so I'll close those comments, and I just want to, again, you know, always want to take a look at what we can do better in terms of engaging the community. And we will be having a study session next Tuesday where it's still going to be this material, right? It's still, but it's going to be by department, there's going to be a lot more, I would assume, given take and dialogue. And I also want to apologize to councilmember Sherrillian, because you, you do have a way of, you understand so much more, because being a former finance director, and I think I, I got hung up on some procedure. I really totally valued your questions, and I want to apologize. So hopefully you will still, you know, you might have more comments and questions now, because we do want the answers to those for next week. And I promise you, I was going to apologize even before Jim Burton said something, but I'm glad you did, so...
No, and I appreciate it, and to, to me, it's, you know, there's a certain timeline here to get this done, and the staff report says discuss and provide direction. If we don't provide direction to, to staff to come back to the study session, they're going to give you their presentations at the study session. At the end of the study session, which is only scheduled for two hours, we might be out of time to get into it, and then now you're going to the next council meeting, to a second study session. So I guess in terms, it was a combination of comment and providing direction as to what I'd like to see come back at the study session, to give staff enough time to work, because I've been on the other side, they need more time. You give it to them at the study session, then they've already missed the cutoff for the next council meeting, again.
Great point and, and understood, so I appreciate you, and please, if, if you got cut off by me, which you did, and you have more questions or stuff, please, please share it with us and them.
No, I'm good, we can talk about it.
So I'm going to make a request to my colleague, councilmember Sherrillian, to continue. I was taking notes. I was interested in the questions you had, particularly because we as a community are fortunate to have you. You have been on the other side of the dais. You were, you left off asking about vacancy factors. Can you continue what your question was, or if you prefer not to, I defer to you? But just know that I, I, everyone was listening to what you had to say.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, I'm just, I'm concerned about utilizing the vacancy factor. Maybe a question is, is how much is each percent of the vacancy factor? And we're taking those upfront in our budget to utilize, because, you know, each percent, I think, is maybe 500,000, I don't know, that's $3 million worth of upfront costs that we're utilizing. Not to say we shouldn't have a vacancy factor, but it used to be much lower. And I'd also liked the opportunity to see what kind of grants are in the hopper. You know, we, we update, we included a grant position last year, this council did, for finance, that was newly filled, and, and what's the plan as far as what's pending in grants? How can, you know, funding outside of just our tax dollars and tax base help us out? Additionally, I'd like to, to see the, you know, our CalPERS POB pension obligation savings, after a certain period of time, I believe it's the 10th or 12th year, they start ratcheting down. So I'd like to take a look at a more outlook that shows our pension obligation bonds and how much we're actually going to be saving in year nine, 10, and 11. As it ratchets down, we have to plan sooner than later, we're only seeing a five-year forecast. But, and then I also have concerns about the storm drain fund, you know, we just went out to the public, we've all thanked the public for voting that assessment in from $19 to $129, and that was supposed to have enough capital funding for the next foreseeable future. And now we're going to hit the general fund again for, to, to pay for a storm drain project, but we can talk about that with the capital improvement plan. I understand it was a sense of urgency project that, that came, came up, but, you know, there's other things, but, you know, our unfunded liability is a big concern, our level, our amount of debt is a big concern, and, you know, that's, that's it for now.
Yeah. Vacancy factor, unfunded liability, amount of debt, storm drain fund. Okay, thank you. Okay. Other questions or comments again at this, you know, before we tell staff to come back? Yes, councilmember Lesser.
During our discussion next week, I am going to want to explore the assistant city manager position and compare that position with a deputy city manager position, so please come prepared to talk about that.
Thank you.
And, you know, it's, it's interesting, because I think, Libby, you mentioned like what supplies, Joe asked, you know, about, I think it was you, and you said supplies, like water, water's going to cost more. And I just, I'm going to share with your permission, councilor Ternay, a conversation we were having earlier, as you do work with the West Basin. If you want to share it, yeah.
No, and this is one of the concerns, as I'm listening to your presentation, things that we haven't even thought about, was we were at a West Basin Water Association meeting, Jeff was also there, but, but one of our water pumppers shared that the processes of getting that water to, delivered to us is going to become more expensive, because all the materials that are used for reverse osmosis and other filtration systems, all of that is brought in from abroad. So, so tariffs are going to hit there, so we, there's a lot of volatility, is basically what I'm concerned about. So I do think that we need to proceed with a little caution right now, and it's at such a ti, and it keeps changing, you know? Who knows in the time that we've been here if another tariff hasn't been implemented or taken off? So, you know, I just think that we need to...
Somebody check the headlines.
I know, so, but thank you.
Okay. All right, yes, councilmember Franklin.
Yeah, and to that end, where could we source? Can we source things locally? And, you know, if the tariff is 25% or even higher, can we source it locally, not within LA, but within the United States, for less, these items? We should start, should we start setting up a, a table of what the items are and where we might be able to find other pricing for it?
Okay. All right. I think with that, there's been some direction provided, and I think we can, is there, are there any questions? Do you, staff got the, okay, great. So I think we can move on.
Great, thank you.
Did you have, did you, okay? Okay, so item number 11, consideration of a resolution approving a pass-through increase for cost recovery related to wholesale water purchases and discussion of the need for an updated water rate study, sewer rate study, and financial plan. Public Works Director Lee.
We just had an intro, didn't we?
Yeah, wow.
Thank you for queuing us up. Good evening again. This evening, utilities manager Jeff Page is going to be giving the presentation and will be available for questions I'm sure you're going to have about this one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor Haworth, members of the city council, I'm Jeff Page, utilities manager. I'm here to discuss the need for a pass-through water rate increase to fully recover fiscal year 2025 wholesale water costs, and to discuss the need for updated and aligned water and sewer rate studies to accurately reflect today's costs to provide municipal drinking water and sewer services. So a pass-through increase allows the city to recover wholesale water costs that were not anticipated during the last water rate study. It's authorized under... It's authorized under government code as well as adopted, our adopted rate schedule. And it's, we're allowed to make the adjustment without the lengthy 218, Proposition 218 process. But we do have to notify customers within 30 days before enacting the rate increase. Since the city planned to head for these situations each year, it's a good idea to consider if a pass rate increase is needed to true-up costs so we don't get behind. So the main drivers for the pass-through are twofold. First, wholesale water costs from the West Basin Municipal Water District have increased more than projected in the city's 2022 water rate study. Second, due to delays in the PEC reservoir treatment plant becoming operational, the city had to purchase more imported water than anticipated. As a result, actual water purchase costs for 2025 are higher than planned, creating a gap that this adjustment would help address. The pass-through rate increase equates to 38 cents per 100 cubic feet of water. 100 cubic feet of water is equal to 748 gallons. The adjustment is projected to generate approximately $638,000 over fiscal year 2025 to achieve near full cost recovery of, I'm sorry, over fiscal year 2026 to achieve near full cost recovery of fiscal year 2025 wholesale water costs. Without this adjustment, the water fund would absorb the entire cost increase, worsening the existing reserve shortfall. The adjustment helps keep the city, helps the city meet its goals of self-supporting enterprise funds. The proposed pass-through adjustment will result in various impacts to customer bills. For residential customers, the increase will range from approximately $3.82 to $11.46 on a bi-monthly bill, depending on water usage levels. This equates to $8.15 per 100 cubic feet of water, rather than the $7.77 without the increase. For commercial customers, with a typical 1-inch meter, the increase will range bi-monthly from about $15.28 to $76.40 for high water usage. The pass-through rate increase is merely a temporary stopgap measure to help achieve imported water cost recovery. A longer-term solution is needed with updated rate studies. Current projections show that both the water and sewer funds are falling short of city reserve targets. The water fund is expected to be $2.6 million below its fiscal year 2025 operating reserve requirement, and the sewer fund is projected to fall short by fiscal year 2026. Neither fund meets best-practice capital reserve levels. Despite previously adopted rate increases, recent years have brought rising costs and infrastructure demands, which now require new roadmaps to navigate today's financial realities. The last water rate study was conducted in 2022, and the last sewer rate was conducted in 2023. Because the sewer rates are based upon the water rates and usage, updating them together is both efficient and strategic. It streamlines consultant work and public outreach, saving both time and money, and lets us assess the combined impact on customers. And just as importantly, it aligns long-term financial planning across both funds. Staff recommends to adopt Resolution Number 25-0046, approving the fiscal year 2025 pass-through water rate adjustment of 38 cents per centimeter cubic foot to recover increased wholesale water costs and to direct staff to begin the process of updating the city's water and sewer rate studies and align them on the same schedule. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, all right. I have one I want to, I kind of want to start off with. So one of the things that we talked about when Councilmember Sherilian and I came and we tasted the water was that now that the reservoir is online for treating a water up to drinking water standards, we will be able to reduce the amount of water we buy or we purchase by 20% at about a savings of $1 million a year. So I guess I'm confused as to why, like, that, then we need to do this? Like, and I know that it was, it took longer to go online. It took longer for that to start happening than, you know, was projected. But, but why is that, you know? How does that not pencil out then?
Yeah, for right now, it's a new line of business for us. We have treatment plant operators that are getting to know the new treatment plant. There's nuances to that, to be able to run it efficiently. And it's, it takes time to get there. I think right now, we're about, able to produce about 12% of our total water right now. But our water rights allow us, if we fully utilize our water rights, we'll be up to about 25%.
So then, what is the projected, how long will that take to get to that? Is that years? Is it months?
It will take probably at least six months to a year to get to know the plant. We've got permit conditions from the state Water Resources Control Board. We have to meet those. And so basically work out the kinks, so to speak.
Okay, so six months till we're hopefully at 20%. Director Lee, did you want to add something or?
Yes, Jeff's giving you a very technical answer. And I've been hanging out with Louie a lot lately. And I'll give you a financial answer to your question. As it relates to the water rates, million-dollar savings that you alluded to, we've already anticipated that in the rates.
Okay.
So because the treatment plant was not up and running this last year, those cost savings that were anticipated in the rates were not realized, and therefore, we've got a fund issue.
Okay.
Does that answer part of your question there?
I think so, yes, yeah, thank you very much. Okay, Councilman Ternick.
I just wanted to clarify, just a quick, how often do we do? What is the typical interval of these water rate studies and sewer rate studies?
I think typically they're around five years.
Every five years?
Yeah, but we've had some high increases in supplies and equipment related to everything in the water industry. And as what we heard today, there are expected tariffs for items that are produced outside the US. Things, the unknown things that are still out there.
And then a follow-up question on, now that we have the treatment plant and we anticipate being able to increase our usage of our own water, then how do we project the savings in two years, three years, when we are up and running?
So we'll have to do some calculations on, you know, the price we pay for the water replenishment district water. There's energy costs that are increasing due to this. There's chemical costs. There's staffing that we have to maintain for this. So, but yeah, we can, we can figure that out going forward.
And to add to that, you know, one of the things that the council has given us, really, you know, good indication where you'd like to go into the future is once we normalize operations of the treatment plant to lease additional water rights in the basin. And once we get to that point where we've got a very stable treatment operation, our costs are predictable, and we get our, our fund balances in line, when we're exploring additional rights, we'll be, be able to articulate what the true financial impact or benefit of those, procuring those rights would be. And I think into the future, we'll be able to really capitalize on that.
Okay, and could we anticipate then a rate decrease if everything plays out the way that we want it to? I mean, just in the long term?
No. Because.
I'm just clarifying.
We don't want to keep our infrastructure stable. We want to continue to reinvest in it.
Yes.
And we have large capital projects in the future that we're going to have to grapple with. We'll be talking about this during the CIP presentation next week. But, you know, an example of that is our ground-level reservoir at Block 35 is going to need to be replaced. We're going to be proposing funds to actually design that replacement. But we don't have funds into, into the future to pay for that. And so any, any rate savings we have from being better stewards of our groundwater resources will help us pay for things like that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilmember Franklin.
Great, thank you. So on slide number three, indicated that the wholesale costs are higher than 2022 water rate study projections. What caused that? What caused the wholesale rates to go up? Because I thought I read somewhere in the report that people were cutting back on water usage?
Yep, there's that. We're, our message is of conservation going forward, so that'll, that'll cut into revenues. And also, cost-wise, ever since COVID, the supply chain's been very tight for water industry-related supplies. So costs have risen dramatically over the last few years.
So like chemicals and nothing, or right, stuff like that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we did our job too well, talking, talking about conservation. So that caused some concern about, in the future, if that line is sloping down in terms of usage, you know? Are we predicting then that the wholesale costs will go even higher?
They could, but one of the things that's been discussed in the, around is the change of a rate structure to include more fixed charges versus variable rates. And so I think a lot of purveyors are thinking along those lines.
So by just changing the charging formula, not based upon usage, that's.
Right, yeah, would be more, more, higher fixed charges and less volumetric rates.
It's a little counterintuitive, I think.
I agree, yeah.
I mean, I'm glad we're, you know, I've always, from this podium, you know, from this dais, talked about the importance of conservation. I just didn't realize it would, your prize is that you have to pay more for your money. And is this going to have a serious impact? Or what kind of impact will this have on the fact that we're going into the water business? You know, with the filtration system now? Will our projections, you know, about what we can charge or the volume that we're going to be able to sell?
Yeah, I think we need to constantly evaluate our operations going forward and try our best to be ahead of the curve and to anticipate changes in the costs, be in tune with conservation measures, what the, what the community is, is actually doing as far as conserving water, things of that nature. So I think if we pay attention closely to these things, that we can, we can do our calculations and come up with a plan.
Okay, and another question is, we've got the wholesale price going up. We've got the fact that we're not online yet, producing the water, okay? And selling it to our own residents. Will the rates ever go down once this is all normalized? Can we maybe, you know, because we went to the filtration system. We spent an extra, how much on that when we redid PEC reservoir? We spent an extra.
The treatment component was about $15 million, rough math.
Fifteen million?
Correct, for the treatment portion of the PEC reservoir project.
Yeah.
So the bulk of the expenditures was the actual reconstruction of the reservoir.
Okay, so, so it was 15 million for the filtration?
Treatment, yeah, it's a green sand filtration treatment process.
Okay, all right, so that's a lot to recover. And we talked before about getting the water rights, right? Buying the water rights to bring in the water to be filtered. I mean, I guess I'm just saying is that we had a consultant that kind of showed this stuff. Why didn't they foresee this? I mean, that should have shown up at a pretty big delta, right?
Well, not to be defensive of the consultant's work, but, you know, that study was started in 2021, in the throes of COVID. Costing changed. We had costs that changed upstream from us, not only at the West Basin level, but also the metropolitan level, where West Basin prefers their water. There's all, and those increases were larger than anticipated in the rate study. And so we used historical norms and what we knew at the time would be, to be expected, but they ended up being more. And, you know, a lot of this, you know, our water rights, we say if we exhaust all of them, it's about 20 to 25% of everything that we use. That rate study was adopted in '22, and we anticipated in '23 and '24 to be realizing that savings, and we did not. We did not realize it. And so there's, you know, there's math component that the consultant needs to do, and knowing the industry and what can be expected. But there's also, there's an operating component that feeds into those equations. And our assumptions and our best plans, on some level, did not come out the way the rate study had anticipated, and thus, we've got a rate issue.
Okay, and so what was, how off was it on a percentage basis?
I don't, I don't have that information right now, but I'll say it's a confluence of factors. I mean, there's, there's rate increases that were, that were higher. There was water production on our side that was lower. And then there's operational costs that probably had some variance to. And then capital improvements, yeah. Over these years, we've completed the reservoir. We've completed other water projects. And, you know, depending on the variances in expenditures for those projects, it all feeds into this problem that we're presenting tonight.
Okay, and so I forget, I remember I asked a question. I don't remember what the answer was, is do you foresee, once we get this sort of all balanced now, is that we can bring the rates down like we promised residents? You know, the whole thing was to save money.
So I wasn't here when the treatment plant and the reservoir project was approved by the council. And so I'm not, I'm not sure what the promise was. My understanding was, is we needed to rebuild aging infrastructure and build the treatment plant so that we could have higher-quality water. To be clear, this is, this treatment plant that we're now operating, it's been operating for a few weeks now. This is the first time in the city's history that we're actually treating our own groundwater. Before, what we would do is we would take untreated water and blend it with treated water that we received from West Basin, which is objectively, it's a lower quality of water that our, our residents and our businesses are using. Now, we're at, we're not going to be putting untreated water into the system. And so it's going to, over time, it will significantly improve the quality of water that we're using in town. And so I guess, back to your question, there's a cost-saving component of using our groundwater rights and procuring extra rights versus importing water, absolutely. But I think that the primary benefit of being able to do that is not necessarily cost savings, although there is a component of that, but to reduce our reliance on the Colorado River and be more self-sufficient as a, as a community, there's high benefit to City Manhattan Beach for that. And so, you know, once we get the treatment plant normalized, we figure out what our groundwater wells, once they're fully rehabbed, can really produce on a, on a decades-long basis. Coming back to the council with a plan, this is what we think we can really do in the long run. And how much, you know, setting a target as a community, how self-sufficient do we want to be with water? I would suggest that that is probably a better goal than looking at the pure, the volumetric rate on water.
Do we have information? I mean, maybe this might come from the consultant, but are we tracking? You can either go look at it at a half-year basis, like how much the water usage is going down because of conservation? You know, a lot of people are turning to drought-resistant landscaping and, you know, artificial turf and things like that. Are we tracking that somehow or?
So we definitely track the water that we use. We're actually going to be bringing next month our annual water supply and demand assessment report for the council to approve before we submit it to the state. And so those metrics, not only do we want them, by law, we have to track them and provide them.
Right, okay.
And absolutely, the consultant will be using that as, as these rates are calculated. Additionally, I think one of the concerns that we want to make sure that we're looking at is, as we're considering any future rate increases, what does that look like in comparison to our neighboring cities? Everyone has friends and family that live in the neighborhood or live in the surrounding. Everyone has friends and family that live in the neighborhood or live in the surrounding communities, and how much are they paying for water versus Manhattan Beach? And that's something that I think this council is really going to want to understand before you adopt any future rate increases.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Franklin picked up on questions I have. So let me just clarify the relationship of conservation to these rates, because you've indicated in the staff report as well, this conundrum, that to the extent that there's greater conservation, that doesn't help with our rates. Is that correct? Or can you state what is the correct proposition?
It doesn't help with our revenue, right?
So when when the community is is reducing water use, we sell less water and we bring in less revenue. And so a very gross exaggeration of that would be if we didn't sell any water this year, we would still have millions of dollars in costs. And so when we consider our, because we have infrastructure that we need to maintain and we have operating expenses that are ongoing, regardless of waters actually being transmitted to our system.
So how does that tie into the last point you made about the fact that our region is facing a reduction in the coming years of water supply from the Colorado River and other sources? This has been widely publicized. How do we integrate conservation with the idea that we have set costs? I mean, I think the only tool, where I'm going with this, the only tool is a fixed rate, as Mr. Page indicated, as opposed to a fluctuating rate? Help tie these points together, because I think there's some important larger issues.
Well, we're definitely need to get a rate expert to to guide us with those decisions. But there's definitely going to have to be an analysis on how much weight of our costs, so to speak, for water is in the variable cost, the volumetric cost, the cost that a customer can control by their tap versus how much is in the fixed cost by just by getting water in Manhattan Beach, you're in for this much to be able to do that. And what Mr. Page was suggesting is we're going to have to to really evaluate if it makes sense to bring more of our total costs on the fixed side versus keeping it on the variable side. So there will always be a mixture, and we need to make sure that 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 mixture makes the most sense for how we're anticipating selling water over the next, it would be a five year rate process.
And that process would incorporate, just as you mentioned in passing in your exchange with Councilmember Franklin, what other cities are charging and how they're able to come up with a more effective rate for their customers?
Yeah, I think the other rates in other regions and other jurisdictions are not necessarily going to dictate what we're doing, but I think that we were going to want to know what they are to make sure that we're not out of the marketplace for water. I mean, I think we don't want to have a fully funded water system and be paying three times more than anyone else in Los Angeles County.
Finally, then, this item is before us because there's a more immediate need to raise rates to address our increased costs, which are increasingly, excuse the pun, but tapping our general fund, right?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Set the context for why we need to address this immediate increase as opposed to waiting for what would be the ordinary practice, which would be to commission this study, a consultant to go ahead and do this in the way that I think other jurisdictions approach it.
Yes, so we're asking for two things. One, to enact the pass through tonight, which would be which would go into effect July 1st after we notice our customers within the 30 days. And really, that helps us just deal with the use the tool that's immediately available to the council to start to stop kicking this can down the road, so to speak. So that that's that's why we think the pass through is a good recommendation. And then the the rate study, it's going to take some months to get to, probably about six months. And so at least we can start collecting more revenue that we're allowed to under our prior Prop 218 process until we get to new rates for consideration.
Helpful, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Ternay.
Thank you, and I just wanted to piggyback on the line of questioning that Mayor Protem is asking about just the cost of the delivery of or the cost of handling the water, delivery of the water, that's that's increased while people are using less water, so our revenues are lower, so we have to kind of bridge that gap. Is that is that correct?
That's that's correct.
Partially correct in that analysis. And that with the our new ability to treat the water, now we're able to perhaps use less imported water, and while we aren't seeing those those savings in a form of reduction, we are seeing those savings in less of an increase going into the future. Is that a correct analysis of that?
Yes, I would say that we're going to be avoiding additional costs.
Yep, and are other jurisdictions seeing these same types of increases in in the past few years, other cities?
You know, we haven't really done any survey work in that regard. I imagine all cities that operate enterprise funds on the what utility side are seeing similar issues.
Yeah, it seems like.
Because the market has changed.
Yeah, it seems like in the meetings that I've attended regarding water, this has been a big point of discussion about how expensive water has become and just, I think this is a struggle that a lot of cities are facing, and it's not just our city. So I just want to put this into the context of what is happening in general in the water world and how to best manage it from our side. And then I do, and I also want to reiterate that that by processing and treating our own water, this is a huge way for us to become more self reliant, right, without purchasing? Because this is all, we've seen what's what's happening at the Colorado River level, and so so all of these investments, so to speak, are going to help us in the long run reduce increases. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Shirley.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing this up. I know it's it's important, but can you tell us what the increase was in 2022, the five year increase? For total?
It was about 40% over five years, from what I remember. And I think that's, we as a city had not done water rates in eight years. So there was a lot of catch up in that.
Right, no, I get that. So part of, and I appreciate, you know, getting the water treatment plant up and and the water is incredible, as Mayor Homewood said, we both.
We're still here.
Said we're still here. But I guess I don't want to put a false sense of hope in the sense of rate, maybe in the long, long term, but not with this water rate study. The rates aren't really going to come down because we're pumping more because of operational costs, because of the need to fulfill our reserve policy and BIM policy. So there's going to be some potentially upfront pain. I want that to be clear going into the study that it could be a larger number than it was when we just did the study three years ago, because of operation, because of added headcount, because of capital improvement, because of just general costs. I mean, I want that false sense of like rates could maybe come down, but it might be further down.
Yes, to be clear, we're asking to do a rate study because we need to raise rates.
Perfect, thank you. I just want that.
Yep.
That to be clear, yes. No, and I feel like, you know, the other night, I mean, that's why I started by saying, I said, we're going to save a million dollars a year by, you know, doing this. And that's true, but that doesn't reduce rates. Like, as you mentioned, the costs are still going up. So it would have, we would have been paying even more if we weren't doing what we're doing.
Right.
Okay, let's open it up to public comments. Thank you.
From our resident?
From our resident. Thank you, Steph.
Stephon Koppa here, once again, representing the public.
Joe Public.
So so interesting topic. You know, I didn't fully understand some of the stuff that was going with the water treatment plant and all that. I think there's some really good messaging relative to we're going to improve our water quality. So so just a few questions. One is, I think on my water bill, I've got a tiered structure. So how is that going to look? Is it is it each one of those tiers get bumped up or what's that going to look like? Two is, what is a typical cost increase per, you know, our residents? Am I going to feel, is it going to be $5 a month or is it going to be $50 a month? I didn't get that. I couldn't put it together. I don't think in 700 and some odd gallons and all that in hectares. So if you could just give me an idea of what it would be for the average resident. The the next one is, is that how do we communicate this to our residents? I listened to this dialogue and, you know, I'm a pretty simple minded guy. I was trying to understand what the root cause was, and we go back to slide three. I look at that and I'm trying to figure out what, how would I explain this? Like tomorrow morning, I run into a buddy of mine, he goes, hey, what is, how was the meeting last night? Well, we're going to have rate increases in the water, and he's going to ask why. And I'm trying to figure out how to answer that in a very simple way. And I'm having difficulty. Is it because we built the plant, you guys paid the extra fee for it and didn't get done on time, and that's why? Or can somebody simple, give me the simple explanation of why the costs are going up? Thank you.
Thank you. And after we see if there's questions on Zoom, we'll try to answer some of those questions.
We have Jim Burton.
Water expert. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Jim Burton, resident. Couple of things, I think Stefan's right in terms of the messaging, the water quality. I think that the improvement in water quality is a selling point. We heard a lot of information in the presentation about why rates need to go up. I think there is some messaging within our Public Works Department on what they have done to keep rates down. And and I think that is being lost at some point. I also want to pick up on something that Director Lee said, being in the water business myself here, avoidance of reliance on the Colorado River water moving forward is key towards sustainable water here, particularly in Southern California. And having a long term groundwater, having long term groundwater rights, acquiring more rights, using groundwater, particularly treating it to improve, that is a message that I think warrants rate increases. And I think if you've got that, that's important. I'm going to yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Diane Wallace.
Good evening. I'd like to see Public Works present a report to the city council comparing our current rates, water rates, with other communities in the county. Thank you.
Short and sweet.
Next is Jill Lampkin.
Hi, Jill Lampkin, Downtown Manhattan Beach Business and Professional Association. My question is in regard to the difference, the difference in the rate increase between residential and commercial rates. I noticed the same thing happened when the waste management rates came out, the residential rate increase was less than the commercial rate. And I'm wondering, I never seem to get any explanation except that that's what's been proposed. Can someone help me understand why the commercial rate is going up at 4.7% versus the residential rate increase at 4%? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There's no additional request on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. So Director Lee, if you could come up and try to answer some of these questions, there were a couple of questions proposed. Firstly, and I'm going in a different order, so Diane Wallace mentioned the report comparing our current water rates with other communities. If if we pass this, would that be part of the updated water rate study?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I think everyone's going to want to know that information.
Yes, everyone wants to know that, okay.
I don't know if it would make sense for us to do every city in the county, but certainly.
Yeah, I think she said other. Yeah, 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 our comparison studies. I think Mr. Koppa mentioned, you know, he has a tiered, you know, the water rate, there are tiered water rates. So what does the rate increase mean for the tiered water rates?
I have a high degree of respect for Mr. Koppa, but we moved away from tiered water rates in 2022. And so we used to have those, but we don't have them anymore. So we have a uniform volumetric rate.
Great, that's great. I mean, it's it's a it's a easy mistake, because I think I still believe that, too. How do we communicate the cost increase? Let's see, that we have to decide upon what's everybody else. Mr. Burton messaging what we've done to keep it down. I'm just making sure, does any, were there any other questions in there that needed to be answered?
Commercial versus residential.
Business versus, yeah, commercial, thank you, I knew it.
I know the answer to that question, but Jeff can answer it better.
Oh, threw somebody under the water truck.
So the the commercial rate is actually slightly lower than the residential rate, but the the it's the sheer volume that it's the larger sized meter in the sheer volume of water that is used on commercial industrial places.
So you're saying it's technically it's less than the residential, but because it's it's just being measured differently, so that's?
No, they use way more water than residences. Yeah, but the cost per unit is less.
So that 4.7% increase that Ms. Lampkin mentioned is because the volume is more?
Well, yeah, that was, that's what I presented on the slide, was that it was a range of, I think, $15 to $76.
Oh, got you, got you, that's what it was.
For commercial.
She came up with.
That increase.
Got it, okay, so it's a volume.
And the residential rates is about $3.50 to $11.46.
Depending on how many people in your family, how many showers you take a day. That was the other question, thank you. Great answers, okay. All right, colleagues, go ahead.
No, Councilmember Franklin.
Go ahead.
Okay, ready for comments? I just want to make sure.
Yes, I know, you know how I get about.
I know, and you have sharp objects in your hands.
I have sharp objects.
Okay.
Thank you.
So first of all, you know, I was asking some pretty hard questions because I I love the new PEC reservoir. And when when council at the time was invited out there to see it, and you spoke about the filtration system, I thought that was great because we have hard water here, and it's because of coming from the Colorado River sources and sometimes from groundwater and the like. And so and and a homeowner has very real costs with that.
That's right.
It fouls up your sprinkler, you know, your shower heads. It fouls up, we were having horrible, remember when there was some brown gok, there was a water main break or whatever, and there was gok, and I thought, oh, gosh, my pressures are so bad. And I called out my handyman, and he cleaned out the filter in our in our tankless water heater. I said, oh, did it accumulate that fast? No, you had accumulation in your, you know, in your hot water heater, in your tankless hot water heater. And that was all due to the water, you know, the hardness of the water. When we remodeled, we put in a really nice steam shower, and that just started to degrade over over the year, over, well, it was only like three or three years old at the time. And it turns out that when I had them come out, they said, there's gok, you know, inside of that, and due to the water and the like. So we had to spend, you know, $1,400 to get that thing repaired. So there is terrific value in clean water, and I think we can do a better job of marketing that, you know, at the hometown fair, at, you know, whatever occasions we got, we can go ahead and do that. So there is value there, you know, as you indicated, in terms of maintenance and everything. You could defer having to purchase a water treatment system. Now, I remember I was going to be looking to buy one, and, you know, those are expensive, and it's an ongoing monthly cost. You can defer that if you've got, you know, good water coming out. The the other thing that we've done in terms of being very proactive is the water meter, the the software, or what is that water meters?
Smart meters?
Smart meter, okay, we got an alert, you know, that our water usage has gone up tremendously. And and, you know, Public Works was right on, right on there, and they say, hey, there's nothing wrong with your pipes, but check your sprinkler system. Well, we changed out a router for Wi-Fi service in the home, and it turns out our sprinkler system works with the Wi-Fi, so it went, it just stopped working. And so it was watering every single day for two months, and that's what doubled our water bill.
So you're the one.
I'm the one, exactly. And but boy, the spring flowers look great. But I think, you know, we're doing a really holistic approach. It was very exciting. It was exciting, you know, you got the taste of water. Well, I got a chance to go, you know, climb down into the into the reservoir, and there's just so many, you know.
Wow.
The technology is just amazing. So it is a good investment. That's why I'm just kind of disappointed a little bit that this got off to a bad start or a worse than optimum start, you know, because, you know, we got to go back. People are monitoring their bills now. I mean, they're monitoring their insurance bills, the DMV bills, I mean, those went up tremendously, their electricity bills and their water bills. And so I was got my Manhattan Beach water bill, and sure enough, it went down because we'd. we fixed the problem and got, because we adjusted the water sprinkler system. So this goes around to information. How are we going to tell the residents? I think if we do a good job of that and kind of show, we add these other factors into that study, I think we'll get a lot of support. And I still want to see people saving water because I grew up in Arizona and, you know, my hometown of Tucson is using less water today with a doubling of the population. And that comes from good sensible conservation. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Shreelian.
Thank you. I have a quick question for Director Lee. And you might have answered this already, but if, if we can't make full use of our pump rights, can we sell those rights to other municipalities or other communities to make more funds, to generate more revenue?
That opportunity is there. On occasion, we get other right holders in the, in the basin that ask us. I think, I don't think we've granted that in the, in the few years that I've been here. And it was kind of pennies on the dollar type of proposition at the end of the fiscal year and they were trying to do some type of project. And then another opportunity we were aware of, you know, we anticipated having the plant up and running, I didn't want to give those away.
Thank you.
I didn't want to sell them, I should say.
No, I understood.
Councilor Attorney.
Okay, thank you so much for the great presentation. I think I just want to kind of summarize what I'm hearing and to, you know, to give you the rationale while, why I'm supporting this pass-through measure. It's a, if you could stay there to just confirm my understanding, it's a true pass-through cost of the delivery of the water to us. And, and this is what we're recouping from 2025, right? Twenty, twenty, okay.
Yeah, that's the 38 cent pass-through that we're recommending.
And then if we defer this pass-through amount, theoretically, we'll need a greater rate increase when we do another rate study.
Correct.
Is that correct? And then, and even though it doesn't seem like we're actually having any cost savings by having our own filtration online, theoretically, we are not incurring as much of a cost increase because we're, we have more of our own water to utilize.
Correct, yeah, we're not, we're spending, we're spending less for the same amount of water.
Okay. And then also, you know, it's been pointed out, the water quality, which is, which greatly needs to be improved. So that, that's being improved as we speak and we can anticipate even further improvements with our water quality? Or are we at capacity yet for the filtration?
Well, I mean, there, there's a number of factors that go into that, but we've got decades and decades of iron manganese in our, in our distribution system that we, we have, if you recall, a few years ago, the council authorized the purchase of our NoDez system that we filtered the water system. And so, you know, that, that type of operation running regularly, not putting any more iron and manganese in the system, over time, it's going to get better. And getting additional pumping rights is not necessarily going to accelerate that.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you. And then I also wanted to point out that I know at a meeting we had earlier today, other cities are looking to our city to see how, because they don't have the filtration system that, so there are other cities who are interested in doing what we're doing. So I love that we're a leader in this area. So thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. I, I made a motion that doesn't preclude any more comments from my colleagues, but I thought, I, it was a, it was a tricky conversation to have, or not a tricky conversation, but it's, it's a complicated, complex issue. And I, we aren't, I am not a water expert. So I feel like I have a slightly better understanding of it now. And I do appreciate what Mr. Compe said about how we message this. Every person in his community wants the best possible water quality to drink and then to, to run their home. I mean, Councilmember Franklin mentioned, there's a cost to homeowners when the water is hard. I mean, it's not just gunk, although, you know, I appreciate that you have gunk as well. But it's, it, you're, the hoses and your laundry machines and your pipes can get little holes in them. I mean, the hard water, you know, can really damage, it's, you know, can really damage your appliances and everything. That's a real cost to homeowners, not to mention what it does to your hair, just kidding. But so I, yeah, of course, I just, at first I was just confused because of, you know, what I thought, oh, this is great, we're saving money. But it's what you're saying, we're spending less for the same amount of water. That's still very important. So I'm going to be supporting this and I think our community will support it. I really will be very interested to see the updated water rate study, the sewer rate study with all that information in it. But building some sort of resiliency, and it's not going to be 100% resiliency and some sort of independence from the Colorado River water supply is so vital. So I'm, I'm grateful that we have this fabulous reservoir and water treatment facility and I will be supporting this. So I've made a motion and it's been seconded. If there's more comments or questions, or not, I call for the question. Uh-oh. We cannot vote. Oh, there we go.
Motion passes, five zero.
Just to clarify, Mayor, the motion is to adopt the resolution and to direct us to do the studies?
Yes, I was supposed to say that.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Eric.
No, shut the whole thing down.
Yeah, thanks so much. All right. Okay, item number 12. Interim Community Development Director Codran, please discuss and help us provide direction to staff regarding interim uses of the city's recent real property acquisition located at 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor Haworth and members of the city council. Good evening, I'm Michael Codran, interim community development director. And community development is excited to be receiving the handoff on the 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard property in order to begin the visioning process with, with the public as well as for Lot 3. And so tonight, Tari Kuvengoa from Associate Planner with Community Development is going to give you a presentation about interim uses for the 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Haworth and council members. My name is Tari Kuvengoa and I'm the project planner for this agenda item before you this evening. The focus of this presentation and discussion will be on interim land uses for the city's recently property acquisition at 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard. In April of this year, the city took ownership of a property here in downtown located at 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard. The site currently consists of a commercial building, which was formerly a U.S. Bank branch location, a surface parking lot, and three drive-through ATM lanes. This property acquisition was driven by several factors, some of which are its strategic location in downtown, the potential for community benefits, preservation of local character, and long-term value investment. It should be noted that the permanent or future use of the site has not yet been determined and therefore is not under consideration as part of this evening's agenda item. The property is located on the southeast corner of Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Morningside Drive. And tonight's presentation is focusing on two interim uses for this site that staff are seeking city council's direction on. The site is located in Area District 3 and Zone Downtown Commercial or CD with a land, with a general planned land use designation of the same. It is also located within the non-applicable portion of the city's coastal zone. The city's local coastal program or LCP identifies land uses that are permitted in the CD zoning district either by right or subject to a use permit. Included in that list are a variety of public and semi-public, commercial, as well as temporary uses. One interim use that staff is proposing is to utilize that parking lot as overflow parking for the city's existing commercial parking permit program. When city took ownership of the property, it was noted that the parking lot was being used by the general public because it was not being monitored. As such, staff has already implemented this interim use and restriped the site to provide 25 parking spaces. In doing so, this helps to free up public parking spaces at other overflow lots. And as part of tonight's item, staff is seeking city council's authorization to continue that use. We want to note that paid public parking would require a use permit and coastal development permit, but using the site as an additional location for the existing commercial parking permit holders does not require either. This was discussed in further detail in the staff report attached to this meeting's agenda. This property presents an opportunity to provide some additional bicycle parking here in downtown. The provision of bicycle parking has been identified as part of the outdoor dining program work effort as a parking strategy to help address parking demand downtown. As indicated in blue in this picture, we have identified the lawn in front of the parking lot as a prime location for additional bicycle parking along Manhattan Beach Boulevard. Apologies. We are seeking city council direction to pave a portion of this lawn and install bicycle racks. We anticipate being able to install 10 racks, which would accommodate 20 bicycles, including electric bicycles. While formal public notice was not required for this agenda item regarding interim uses, it was included on the agenda for this meeting, which was posted at city facilities and on the city's website in accordance with law, and no public comments have been received. At this time, a permanent or future use of this property has not been determined. Future uses will be subject to any applicable entitlement processes. Before a permanent use is determined, there will be a significant public outreach effort. The first community meeting is scheduled later this month on May 21st, as Planning Manager Feinstein announced earlier in this meeting. It will be an open forum to begin collecting ideas and feedback from the community on the future of this property as well as parking Lot 3. This will be part of a larger effort to determine the future uses of city-owned property here in downtown. And as I mentioned, it will include additional public meetings that will help inform the city council's decision regarding the future use of both properties. There is one update I wanted to note on this slide from when it was published last week. The community meeting will begin at 6:00 PM, not 5:00 PM as shown here. To summarize, staff is seeking council direction on two items. The first is to continue interim use of the lot for the commercial parking permit holders and then to install bike racks in the lawn area along Manhattan Beach Boulevard. That concludes my presentation for this evening and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Great. The mayor has stepped up momentarily and asked me to run the meeting. I see other council members want to ask questions and then I have some questions. Councilmember Shreelian?
Thank you. So just to confirm, we have 26 spaces created in the bank building and it's being currently utilized for commercial parking.
It is being utilized for permit holders of the existing commercial parking permit program.
Perfect. How's that working out? Do you have, are other vehicles parking there? Are we being able, did we put signage up? Are we writing parking citations? Is that working?
We installed signage and at first, for the first week or two, our police department was going to be issuing warnings and then fully enforcing after that.
Excellent. One last question. It still says U.S. Bank on the signs. Is there a way that we can change that or at least cover it because it's not U.S. Bank?
We could look into the cost of that.
I'm not saying change the sign, I'm saying just, you know, it's no longer U.S. Bank, but the city logo, no.
Why not? Okay, oh, sorry, I can't see. David, Councilmember Leser.
Sure. And I, as a follow-up to that question, I wanted to confirm, are there not some interim steps that might be necessary to secure the existing building, even though it will not be used, if the interim purpose would be temporary parking? A lot of glass and one could imagine perhaps those with ill intent or perhaps those wanting to find just shelter could make use of the existing structure, even though we want community engagement as to its long-term purpose. I'm just wondering, I didn't see any reference to the existing improvement on the site and I just was wondering how staff has addressed that.
Good question.
We could board it up if that was something that the council wanted. We have opted for constant check-ins. Our Public Works Department has put that on their facilities route, so we have been monitoring the facility. The alternative would be the boarding if, if the council preferred that, but aesthetically would obviously take a toll on the property.
I just think we'll offer an opinion, I think it might be helpful just to have an assessment, which staff may have already done, just to the extent that this may be in this condition for some period, because there's financial considerations to even bulldoze the building, demolish it. We may need to talk about that as a council. So I have other questions, let me stop there.
Councilmember Franklin.
Yes. I, I think I've answered my question because we're just dealing with this specific purpose right now. But since it's opening up 26 commercial spots, is there any way in our internal accounting that, that the revenue from those permits gets allocated to the cost of acquisition? Even if it's needed? I don't know if it's even needed.
We could consider that. I don't have an answer right now.
There wasn't expenditure to acquire the property.
They're not additional though, right? I mean, but you're trying to allocate the actual revenue from the 26 permits to, okay.
Yeah, to the acquisition cost. I don't even know if it's, like I say.
The cost of the permits themselves or the cost of the potential revenue that we're capturing from other parking spaces that are parking meters that are being utilized as a result of these spaces being on the property? Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, just, and again, I don't even know if we need to do that, but I didn't see anything addressed like that, you know, in terms of talking about revenue.
We did include the anticipated, you know, inadvertent revenue in the staff report. That cost there, Tari?
It's estimated to be between $12,675 to $25,350 per month.
So I guess my question is that being allocated towards whatever account we might have?
Not right now, but we will discuss with the finance department.
All right, great. And then, did, did you look at other, I mean, I see that lot and, you know, there's other, there's possibilities for additional bicycle parking on it. You know, like in the ATM lanes, we got it sort of blocked off so that people don't block in the middle car, so there's extra space in there. And then I noticed over the last couple of months, the, where the trash container went, there was people, you know, dropping trash by and things like that. If we can just clean that out, we could probably put in another, you know, four or five racks in there, if you want to just.
We can look into and discuss other potential locations for bike parking and report back to you.
Great, good, thanks.
Councilmember Leser, you have a follow-up?
I just wanted to follow up with regard to the timeline. After the May 21st community meeting, when is this item expected back to council? Others have asked me, what is the timeline for considering the prospective uses of this property after the public meeting? Thank you.
We will likely have to have multiple public meetings on this, it won't be one, but we will come, I don't have an exact timeline for you right now, but we will be hosting multiple public meetings, not just one, considering, number one, we want to be able to engage as many people as we can. And also, ideas evolve. And so after the first public meeting, we may have to do some work and then come back and engage with the community once again before coming back to the council.
And tonight, we're only being asked to address the issue of using the parking spaces, 26 spaces for commercial parking, and then the question of the bike racks. To follow up on Councilmember Franklin's question about the location of the bike racks, what are our options tonight? I presume one option- I presume one option would be to go forward with the staff recommendation to put them at the location which is proposed by staff on what is now a grass area, or to have staff evaluate other options?
You could also just direct us if we find other options to go forward with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Did I hear in your question that you don't like the idea of the grassy area being used or?
Just wondering. I'm just thinking. I mean, because the grass does provide a nice buffer on the street, but on the other hand, there's a practical need for more bike parking, particularly following the loss of the bike spaces that were adjacent to Lot 3.
We'll hear from the dog owners, for sure.
Or they'll just pee on the bikes. I didn't say that, but I think that I would say we could direct staff, of course, we have to open up for public comment, but to explore all options and additional, but I assume there's going to be some bikes up there. But, okay, if there's not more questions, I'll open up to the public, to Joe Public. Okay. You don't have to, but you're welcome to.
I feel obligated.
We appreciate you.
Staff, I'm coming here once again. Just interesting, I like the idea of using the space for the parking. It's like, great. And it sounded like we could get 15 to 20 grand a month or something like that. So just from an economic standpoint, let's say we're going to do this for four or five months, that generates 80 to 100 grand. I think our costs that we expend to put in the bike racks and everything like that, we don't want to exceed what we're going to get in revenue on there. So I think there's a budget that we have to kind of, you know, give the staff to kind of work with it. If we can do them inside the parking lanes, that would reduce the cost. I think that would be advantageous. And the other item is that I think our residents, when they walk around, they see something being done, they think it's permanent. So if we do something, I encourage us to have a sign somewhere that puts up and says this is an interim solution as we work through it. Please get involved in the community. Here's how you can, you know, find someone to talk to and get involved. Thank you.
Great idea. Maybe a QR code. Well, seriously, because if you walk by, okay, no one likes a QR code.
I like QR codes.
No, there's been a lot of fraud.
Oh, there have been frauds. No, no, you're right. There has been fraud. There has been fraud. Sorry.
Just a website.
Okay. Okay. Forget the QR code. Are there any comments on Zoom?
Yes, we have Jim Burton.
Sorry, Jim, I didn't mean to jump in. Go ahead.
No, that's, that's fine. Jim Burton, resident. I've got a lot to say on this issue. This is sort of why I'm trying to stay awake here. A couple of things. Number one, completely in favor of what the city is currently doing right now in the interim. I think the overflow permit parking from, particularly with Lot 3 being gone, with Lot M, completely in favor. I do have some issues about, well, number one, the staff report, and number two, I just questioned, it says proposed interim use. You and this council is being asked to vote on something that is already happening. I mean, they're all, they've already striked it, they've already put up signs, they've already posted Lot M, everybody's been notified. I've got a Lot M permit, I can park there. Everybody's been, we're doing it already. And so, anyway, I've got a, just a question about what we're actually voting on. And then number two, I think Councilmember Lesser alluded to this maybe, but I think the loss of grass, I love the idea of additional parking. Councilmember Franklin may be doing something underneath out of the rain, but the loss of grass, I think, is a bummer. But if that's the only place, it's where we can put the bikes, maybe, but I would think before you lose the loss of grass, I think we filled in with concrete, that little area, that gore area in front of Starbucks. And again, we're just more, we're losing more and more grass, open space, et cetera. The revenue in respect to Mr. Campo, I don't, do not think you're getting $15,000 a month out of those 26 spaces. I mean, parking permits are only $45 a month, assuming they go up for that. So the $15,000 a month, I don't think we're getting that. And then in terms of the security of the lot, you've got residents right there, one of the, one of the borders is residents, they're looking down. We've been policing that lot for years. In fact, kudos to Public Works because I think for the first time, someone besides residents actually swept that lot in the last couple of days and picked up the trash. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
No additional requests on Zoom?
I'm going to close public comment. Now, we do have a motion on the floor. Again, doesn't preclude comments, but Councilman Tournay?
Before I go through my motion, can you clarify the amount that we are, how that amount was calculated?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to jump in. So the $15,000 to $25,000 range that we provided was actually calculated based on the potential meter revenue that someone, a paying customer would pay at a meter. So it doesn't have to do with the permit holders, the cost of permits, who's parking in the new lot. It's what the paid revenue would be in, say, Metlocks if those permit holders are, yeah, it's freeing up spots as they're moving over.
It's freeing up spots.
So, and then the ranges, because, you know, it's really hard to tell exactly, you know, how much revenue we would get there, and it's kind of impossible for us to track that as well. But all parking meter revenues go into our parking fund, which then can be used for future projects.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that. And then based on that, I'd like to move to, for us to continue the interim use of the lot for commercial parking permit program and the installation of bicycle racks, including what's been proposed, but also exploring additional racks as suggested by Councilmember Franklin, with an emphasis on maintaining green space if possible.
Okay. That's, the motion has been seconded. Any further discussion, comments, questions, harassment? Okay. Here we go. Jokes?
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you to staff for, you know, providing an interim use for that. I think that's really smart, and I'm very happy about that. Okay.
My one comment is, I unfortunately am going to be out of the country during the community meeting, but I look forward to hearing about it. I have months, five months planning for a trip to be out of the country during the time, but I didn't want to hold up this meeting from going forward because this is an important priority for our community.
They can always have it on Zoom.
There you go. Yeah, I don't want to, yeah, there you go. No, I, and it will be incumbent on all of us to really, you know, keep this discussion going, and I have a lot of faith in this council to do so. All right. City council requests and reports, are there any AB 1234 reports? Okay, how about future agenda items?
I have one.
Oh, Councilmember Lesser? And then you, and then you, and then you.
So I appreciated your comment at the beginning of this meeting, which was, how many hours ago? Four hours?
Not that bad.
But it was, it was a comment about the tragedy we've experienced in the last, gosh, how many hours? 72? Three days ago?
Yeah.
Of the loss of life again on Sepulveda Boulevard. And I appreciate our outreach to Caltrans on the administrative level and through our legislative representatives, but we need to have a community meeting, I think, to have an agendized item where we can discuss potential safety measures on Sepulveda, following now the third fatality in, was it five months?
Second.
That would be my proposed.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Councilman Tournay?
Okay, thank you. And back to parking. I wanted some clarification maybe, but, or a direction to staff to examine a scale up of the implementation of the meter rate versus.
I mean, a phase in?
A phase in, not ramp, but a phase in of the meter rates instead of going straight. I think July 1st was when we were going to implement the new rate, right? Is that correct? July 1st?
Somebody told me they're already hit.
Sorry.
Are we discussing parking meter rates?
Parking meter rates, yes.
Those actually went into effect last Friday.
So do you mean parking meter or parking permit?
The user fees that we discussed in the other item go into effect on July 1st, but the parking meter rates, we had a 15-day waiting period, I believe, for the coastal development permits to be processed. And then I paid the higher rate Friday afternoon, so they're in effect.
All right, well.
Never mind.
And just as a short note, so I used my credit card. So you've got a message on the meters now about the QR codes, right?
Yes.
So can you just explain that for a second?
Oh, yeah, that was an idea after those stickers popped up around town to try to just alert customers to not scan any QR codes that might be appearing on the meters, that we don't accept payments in that way. So I'm glad you noticed that. I hope it's working.
Yeah, no, it's great.
That's good.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay. And then if you could stay there, and the second part of that is whether or not we can do a phase in of the permit rates. Have those been implemented, the increase on the permit rates?
So for the user fee study, so staff's currently working on building those new user fees into our permitting software, so I think we'd have to really understand what you mean by phasing it in.
I think you mean parking permit.
Now I'm talking about the monthly parking permit, so.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I thought we were back on the.
No, no, so sorry. I switched, and then I didn't, I switched too fast.
These are the items from the previous meeting?
So we're talking parking.
Commercial.
We went from $1.60 a month to $2.50 a month, right, for the permit, and then no bulk, no bulk discounts anymore?
Yes.
I'd like to consider us phasing that in, in maybe, you know, a six-month, if we can take a look at what that looks like as far as how, the impact on our revenues, if we did it in a six-month step and then a full implementation in a year, if that's.
Okay, yeah, I'll have to look at the timing on that. I know our monthly, our monthly permits went on sale last week, so I believe those sold, that was the monthly, though. But so in, so last week, we still sold them at the old rates, and then we notified everyone as they came in that, you know, next month, there would be a rate increase. Now, for the six-month commercial parking program, I think we're just working on those letters to go out, but they haven't been sent out yet, so we could do further research there.
So maybe, I'd like to.
If there's a second? I think, a second on that? It would be, it would be a second, but I think it's, just to clarify, and it's your, it's your request, but to, to phase in the biannual commercial parking as well as the monthly, to bring back options of phasing those in.
Yes.
So council can.
That's what you would need. You'd need a second to do that.
A second, but I have a second part.
You've already done, you've already done the monthly, you've already started selling the monthly?
No, we notified, we sold them at the old rates last week, and then we were notifying everyone that they would go up starting in May.
I second that for you.
Can I add a second part to it? I'm sorry. Just on, on the permit, as part of that, if we can get information on how many permits are sold, and then how many spots are available for those permits in the various lots.
Addressing the oversell.
The overselling of the permits. So we want to know what that formula looks like, what those, those numbers look like.
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then Councilmember Sherillian?
Thank you for the third meeting in a row. Mayor Pro Tem Lesser's taken an item that I wanted to add in, which was, you know, to look at some kind of traffic calming and on Sepulveda and authorize staff to come back. So I'm really glad that you did that. I think it's really important to have a public meeting and everyone come in. There was, Mr. Holtz came in early on and asked a lot of questions, and I looked at the city manager, what potentially, you know, how to kind of phrase this and the way to have staff, I feel like he was asking the staff for some kind of support or the city to have options of assisting him. I don't know exactly what those are, so I don't know if there's even a second to help with the process, but I would like to know what the options are. Got a vacant land out there, it's been there for five years.
I'll second that if you.
That's it.
Yeah, I understand the direction. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Franklin?
Okay, enough of parking. So what I'd like to do is to propose that staff assist in developing a program for our gardeners that work in the city of Manhattan Beach to convert their equipment from gas to electric.
The leaf blowers?
Yeah, well, not the leaf blower yet. I'll explain the leaf blower. But I have done some research, there is an AQMD program that will do a one-for-one. You know, if you've got a mower, a gas mower, you can bring that in, you turn it in, and then you get a certificate to go ahead and purchase or whatever the mechanism is, they can replace it essentially at no charge to them. I've talked to about 10 or 15 gardeners in town. A lot of them are doing it already, but I think we need to have a lot more proactivity on this in terms of getting them to move over to electric and just all, everything that we can do on that.
Okay.
That's a second.
Yeah. And Nia, you probably, maybe at COG, you've heard, that sounds like a program that COG is probably involved with, maybe they'll help.
We can explore, yeah.
Yeah.
Profunding, but just in point of the leaf blower, I want to do the vacuum instead of the leaf blower.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because that's our law, anyway.
Yeah.
So make some compliant with the law. It does what we intended to, you know, to do. I think residents really want it, so.
Great. And then I, I guess it's a future agenda item. I would like to set up a little subcommittee, mayors, I don't know if it's mayors or just a subcommittee on the World Cup and the Olympics. So I have a second there. Okay. Got the pins, I want to get going. All right, so we got a second to bring it back. Anything else? All kinds of good stuff. All right. Is there a city manager's report?
Yes, there is. Thank you, mayor. Typically, the city council goes dark for one of the meetings in August. This year, we have the pleasure of having our mayoral reorganization, the first meeting in August. And with that, we have proposed to go dark the first meeting of July instead, which is July 1st and falls in that week of July 4th. With that, we hope all of our residents and our council members have a wonderful July 4th and spend that with their families enjoying. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is that it? That's it? Okay. City attorney?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. All right, we have some informational items. We've got that. Let me see what else we got here. Get into adjournments. Okay, so am I adjourned to 4:30 on May 6?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock on May 6. We are adjourned, and what?
May 13.
May 13.
Okay, so let me, let me do this again. We are adjourning this regular meeting to four o'clock on Tuesday, May 13.
Yes.